Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including Town Meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient Woodsole Terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple: to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, (508) 548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganeck Communications. Meganeck offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running, and allow you to focus on growing your business. (877) 634-2638, or meganeck.net.
For more than 50 years, SEA has been a leader in ocean education, offering undergraduate, gap, and high school students the opportunity to gain hands-on experience in ocean sciences and blue humanities. To learn more about SEA's programs, please visit sea.edu.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. (508) 548-0911.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration. (508) 548-8255.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
East Spence has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. Enjoy our kitchen department with a wide selection of kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Find your home repair needs at our hardware store. Our friendly staff is available to assist with your hardware and kitchen needs. (508) 548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpeting and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, servicing Falmouth and other Cape communities for over 50 years.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, (508) 563-5070.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations: John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, (508) 548-2287. Ermine Level Real Estate, 550 West Falmouth Highway, (508) 548-0703. Dogs &amp; Hogs, 781 Main Street, smoke turkey and Thanksgiving orders to go. J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, (508) 539-3888. M. Duffany Builders, (508) 540-3625. Danny's Barber Shop, (508) 548-6013. David Rogers Electric, (508) 274-2057. Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, (800) 800-8990. Chapman Funerals and Cremations, (508) 540.
Okay, all Town Meeting members present, please come forward, take your seats. Make sure you've checked in and received your electronic voting device. Members of the public should be sitting in the balcony. Only our Town Meeting members and members of boards and committees and staff should be sitting on the floor of the auditorium. All guests should be up in the balcony. We do have a microphone up there, so when we get to articles, if anyone up in the balcony would like to speak, you just stand up and come on down to the mic. I'll add you to the list, and we'll recognize you as we go. So we're going to queue up a slide here to establish a quorum. This is the quorum call. All members present, please press 1A for the establishment of the quorum. If you're not here, you can press 2B. I want to remind all Town Meeting members and members of the public, each time you speak, if you could identify yourself by name and precinct for the record. I want to thank FCTV for our live broadcast of Town Meeting, gavel to gavel. Our microphone carriers tonight will be Ned Pride and Anna Lowell. And we have a quorum with 190 members present. We have a quorum, and I call this annual Town Meeting into session. All present, please rise for the presentation of the colors by Scouting America Troop 236 for girls. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all. At this time, I'll... I'm missing somebody in the balcony, so I'm off. We don't have a bagpiper up there, do we? I didn't see him come in. Is he? Okay, yes, we do have the bagpiper from the Brian Baru Pipe Band. At this time, I'll recognize the Brian Baru Pipe Band for playing of "Amazing Grace." As we reflect during this moment of "Amazing Grace," tomorrow will be the funeral for Mary Pat Flynn. Mary Pat Flynn, 26 years ago tonight, put my name in nomination to be the town moderator. And over the years, even across political party aisles, Mary was a great mentor to me, taught me a lot about how this institution works, as well as the county when she moved on. So tonight, as we play "Amazing Grace," let us reflect and remember the legacy of Mary Pat Flynn. Was I miscued for the person waving? Is there a bagpiper up there with you? No, okay. I asked if the bagpiper was up there, and somebody's waving at me, so... Okay. Unfortunately, evidently, the bagpiper's not here, so let's have a moment of silence. I'm sorry. At this time, I'll recognize Thomas Mokely, state representative-elect, for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heavenly Father, may our meeting this evening be not only an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how our community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask you to watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and our world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen.
The girls from Scouting America Troop 236 are now in the balcony. They are beginning their citizenship in the community merit badge, so they're going to stay with us for a couple of articles. And they have all just received the rank of Tenderfoot. Scouting America is the old Boy Scout of America program, and these young girls are working in the same program towards their Eagle Scout. So congratulations to the girls from Troop 236. We're going to start with a swearing-in of the new Town Meeting members. Mr. Clerk, for the swearing-in of the members.
The following people, please rise. Weatherly Bernard Doris, Peter Clark, Thomas Crane, Andy Dean, Judith Fenwick, Douglas Jones, Veronica Lowell, James Newman, Catherine O'Brien Bumpus, Eric Turkington, Andrew Ashton, Karen Bizinett, Gary Brightboard, Sandra Coonies, Sandra Feeman Silva, Mark Finneran, Frank Guycheck, Richard Johnson, Richard Merrick, Ginsey Over, Jared Schwartz, Susan Smith, Miranda Voight, Henry DiGiuggerio, Anne Estes, Nathaniel Estes, Thomas Garrity, Cynthia Heinz, Maxim Jonas, Dale Cap, Patricia Moreno, Margaret Nickerson, Carol Stromney, Jeff Thomas, Cheryl Williams, Mary Ellen Walwart, Joshua Bond, Brian Keef, Melissa Keef, Helen Kennedy, Rose Mae, Deena Panda, Susan Richmond, Kelly Tortono, Linda Toby, Thomas Bushy, James Callahan, David Chevereer, William Dynan, Charlotte Harris, Mary Harris, Charles McCaffrey, Priti Nelson, Michael A. Palmer, James Parton, Robert Antonucci, Martha Azendorf, Jason Cullinan, Michael Duffy, Elizabeth Klein, Jennifer McCarthy, Katrina Nevin, Paul Sellers, Douglas Shear, Thomas Voce, Peter Seaman, John Collins, Brian Gugliano, Cheryl Leahy, Margaret Megha, Barry Panish, Sylvia Patel, Matthew Patrick, Taryn Peterson, Jack Tompkins, Yula Walsh, Joe Kupick, Earl Barnard, Kim Comart, James Cummings, Ronald Dwyer, Nicholas Lowell, Heidel Mengay, Lynn Rhodes, Ron Smolowicz, Steve Solbo, Christine Yujuah, Susan Augusta, Phyllis Day, Jeffrey Duffy, Michael Holcomb, Harvey Lemay, Joseph Neto, Misty Ninemeyer, Jack Richardson, Gina Weber, Benjamin Wise, Frances Winchek. Please all rise, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all duties incumbent upon me as a Town Meeting member. According to the best of my ability and understanding I will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws and charter of the Town of Falmouth. So help me God. Congratulations.
Some of you might be familiar with the position called "Watchman of the Warrant." The Watchman of the Warrant is a position that looks through all of the votes that have happened at Town Meeting and reports annually in the Town Report as to the actions that may have been taken, or if no action has been taken to report that by either the Select Board or the School Committee on particular articles. For the last number of years, Thomas Mokely has been my appointed Watchman of the Warrant, and now in his new capacity as state representative-elect and as a Town Meeting member, he will be resigning both of those positions at the end of the meeting tonight. So let's have a round of applause for Thomas Mokely, former Watchman of the Warrant. And now the advertisement. I need a Watchman of the Warrant. So if anyone's interested in that position, reach out to me, and we will talk about what it entails in more detail and see if it's something that you might be interested in. Again, it's for the annual report, so it happens once a year in the summertime. So if anyone's interested, reach out to me after the meeting. At this time, I'd like to start with the dispensing of the reading of the warrant. Madam Chair of the Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant, except for the officer's return.
Okay, you've all heard with the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record. At this time, I'll read the officer's return of the warrant. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified, and some of the inhabitants of the Town of Falmouth qualify to vote on Town Affairs. As said, warrant directs by posting a contested copy thereof in Town Hall and in every precinct in the town, signed by Constable Thomas Zine. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for Town employees who are not residents of the town the right to speak on any issue before the meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to allow members of boards and committees to sit in front with their respective boards and committee. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, I'll recognize the Planning Board for our notification of public hearing.
Town Meeting members, my name is Paul Dwyer, Precinct 2, and clerk of the Planning Board. I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the Planning Board. In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 5, Massachusetts General Law, and Section 241.1D of Falmouth zoning bylaw, public hearings were held on September 17th, September 24th, October 1st, and October 8th, 2024, for Articles 15, 16, 17, 34, 35, and 36, for the November 2024 Annual Town Meeting. And all those who wish to speak were heard. As required, a report is hereby submitted with the Planning Board's final language and recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start tonight with the blanket vote. On the blanket vote, we'll go through each of the articles. I'll do a brief description, call your attention to the recommendation. If you would like to discuss that article, or make an amendment, or to vote no on it, if it's recommended as positive action, just stand up, and y'all hold, and we will hold that and move on to the next one. At the end, I'll run through all of them just by number for a second chance, and then I'll entertain the motion from the Finance Committee to accept all articles that were not held as recommended as the official action of Town Meeting, and then we'll start with Article 1 and work our way through the warrant. Article 1 is to choose necessary officers. That is an automatic hold. Article 2, to hear reports. It's an automatic hold. Article 3, to amend the code of Falmouth by adding a new section in Chapter 9 under assessors. Article 4, to vote to rescind an amount of unissued borrowing in the amount of $356,793. Article 5 is the omnibus budget. That will be a hold. Article 6, to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of funding capital improvements, $196,705 for water mains and district-wide floor repair and replacement. Article 7 is a hold. This is the non-capital project budget. Article 8, to appropriate a sum of money to supplement the fiscal '25 budget. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article 9, to vote to change the name and purpose of the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to a Combined Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund. How to hold? Article 10, to vote to transfer the balance in the debt stabilization fund to the Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund. That's going to be a hold pending action on the previous article. Article 11, to vote to appropriate a sum of money to the Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund, $3.5 million. That's also going to be a hold because of the original hold. Article 12, to vote to appropriate the sum from the Fire Stabilization Fund of $370,917 to supplement the fiscal '25 Fire Department budget. Article 13, to transfer $20,000 within the fiscal year 2025 operating budget from purchase services to salary and wages temp. Article 14, to transfer the amount of $48,632.59 from the PEG excess receipts reserve for appropriation account for costs related to government access programming. Article 15, the hold? Article 16, to see the Town will vote to amend Chapter 240 zoning of the Town of Falmouth under accessory apartments. Article 17, to see the Town will vote to amend Chapter 240 zoning of the code of Falmouth for agricultural districts' use table and residence districts' use table. Article 18, to authorize the Select Board to dispose of or otherwise convey a portion of two parcels of land at Locust Field Road. The hold? Article 19, to authorize the Select Board to dispose of or otherwise convey all or portion of land at West Falmouth Highway. Hold? Article 20, vote to authorize the Select Board to issue a request for proposals for land at West Falmouth Highway. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article 21, to authorize the Select Board to issue a request for proposals or otherwise convey one parcel of land at 21 Pheasant Lane in East Falmouth. Hold? Article 22, to authorize the Select Board to issue a request for proposals or convey a parcel at 20 Brigantine Drive. Article 23, hold? Article 24, to appropriate the sum of $34,620 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve Fund balance to rehabilitate the Falmouth Station HVAC system located at 59 Depot Avenue. Article 25, to vote to appropriate the sum of $415,500 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve Fund balance to rehabilitate the exterior of Highfield Hall. Article 26, to vote to appropriate or transfer the sum of $24,500 from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance to develop a conceptual plan for the Falmouth Community place base located at 416 Gifford Street. Article 27, to vote to appropriate or transfer the sum of... Article 27, to vote to appropriate or transfer the sum of $103,000 from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance to complete the construction of the Shiverix Pond Public Access Improvements Project. Article 28, to vote to appropriate the sum of $82,000 from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance to rehabilitate the Bell Tower Tennis Courts. Article 29, to transfer the sum of $75,000 from free cash to the Falmouth Contributory Retirement System Special Military Fund. Article 30, to vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 26, to provide an annual stipend to the board members of the Falmouth Retirement Board in the amount of $4,500 per year. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article 31 is to vote to amend the town's classification plan as shown in the chart. Article 32, to see the town will vote to amend the Code of Falmouth by adding a new section, operation of short-term rentals. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Hold? Article 33, to see the town will vote to amend the Code of Falmouth, Section 172, for rental property. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Hold? Article 34, to vote to amend Chapter 240 zoning of the Code of Falmouth by deleting Section 240-9.6, home occupation in its entirety, and replace it with the home-based business. Article 35, to vote to amend Chapter 240 zoning of the Code of Falmouth by amending 240-3-2 definitions and deleting all references to home occupation and home-based service business. And insert the following home-based business. Article 36, to amend 240 zoning Code of Falmouth by deleting Article 10, non-conforming uses structures and lots in its entirety, and inserting the text for "non-conforming structures, uses, and lots." Hold? I think that's the last one. Okay. So Article 1 is a hold. Article 2 is a hold. Article 3. Article 4. Article 5 is a hold. Article 6. Article 7 is a hold. Article 8. Article 9 is a hold. 10 is a hold. 11 is a hold. Article 12. Hold? Article 13. Article 14. Article 15 is a hold. Article 16. Is a hold. Article 17. Article 18 is a hold. Article 19 is a hold. Article 20. Article 21 is a hold. Article 22. Article 23 is a hold. Article 24. Article 25. Article 26. Article 27. Article 28. Article 29. Article 30. Article 31. Article 32 is a hold. Article 33 is a hold. Article 34. Article 35. And Article 36 is a hold. Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that all articles that have been passed and not held be and hereby are adopted as recommended as the official action of this meeting, and that the necessary monies for the same shall be raised and appropriated or as otherwise specified.
Okay, you've all heard the main motion to accept all articles not held as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Mr. Chairman, for notification.
Mr. Moderator, I hereby serve notice of reconsideration of all articles passed under the blanket vote.
Okay, notice has been served. Article 1, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I, I move Article 1 as printed.
Article 1 as printed. This is to choose necessary officers. We do have a vacancy on the Finance Committee. The full five members come up in the spring, but we do have a vacancy and the nominating committee has provided us with a name for that. But before we do that, I want to recognize where that vacancy came from. That vacancy came from an individual who, for years, was my right-hand person with the computer and the laptop and the three-ring binders. And then, when she retired, she went on to volunteer as a member of the Finance Committee and has served, I don't know the exact number, but decades. So the total service, around 50 years with the town in one capacity or another. You all know her as Judy Magnani. Judy, thank you for the mentorship you gave me when I started this and for your 50 years of service as our Finance Director, Finance Committee Director. At this time, I'll submit the nominated name of Addie Vaquero for the one, three-year term. Any further nominations? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to close nominations. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, I'll take a vote to accept the nominated candidate, Adelaide Vaquero. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations. Addie, you're on the Finance Committee. Article 2, to hear reports. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 2 as printed.
As printed. Committee reports. We have a Water Quality Management Committee report. And then I have a Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And are there any other committees that would like to report that I don't know about yet? Okay, good.
Good evening. I'm Steve Rafferty, Precinct 2, and I'm the Chair of the Water Quality Management Committee. I thank this body for their support of all the work that's going on to improve the quality of the water in the estuaries. We came before you a year ago looking for funding to do the first phase of the Outfall Project, which is a major, it's a major component of what we're trying to get done. Amy Lowell, the Superintendent of the Wastewater Department, has been leading the effort with our consultants to spend that money effectively and keep the project moving. I believe we are on schedule, if not ahead of schedule.
May we have two extra minutes, Mr. Moderator?
Okay, so they're asking for two extra minutes, so that'd be a total of seven. All in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and you have seven minutes.
Do we have a presentation? For Article 2? Nope. For Article 2, the Water Quality Management Committee, Rafferty and Lowell. My two minutes hasn't started yet, Ryan. All right. Seven minutes, really, actually. You got it? Thank you. So as Steve said, we want to give a presentation today to update town meeting on the progress since the November 2023 town meeting and all the outfall data collection and permitting work that's been done since. First, a summary of the proposed outfall. What we're proposing to discharge is tertiary-treated wastewater, which is the waste, is, will have the same level of treatment that our current wastewater treatment facility provides and what we currently discharge to the ground. The outfall will be up to 2 million gallons per day, future flow. It's about 2,300 feet offshore, south of Kite Park, where the star is located on that figure. It's beyond the 20-foot water depth contour and beyond the eelgrass area, the area in which eelgrass grows. The water velocity in the sound at this location is about 1.6 feet per second. So the dilution of 1,000 to 1 would be achieved within 300 feet of that discharge point. First, we've established a regulatory review team. The Department of Environmental Protection is taking a lead role in this outfall permitting and evaluation process. We've been meeting twice monthly for many months with the Department of Environmental Protection, as well as many other regulatory agencies that will be issuing outfall permits. We have very good regulatory engagement at this point. We've confirmed the scope of data collection for our baseline survey that's required under the Ocean Sanctuaries Act. So the yellow rectangle on this figure shows the original preliminary eelgrass survey that we completed in 2022. We had numerous meetings with all the applicable regulators this spring, and the outcome of that was the larger outside box there, the green or blue box there. They want a larger survey area and more samples within that area. That, along with the extensive regulatory coordination that has been already required, results in our town meeting Article 5 request for an additional $430,000 in supplemental funds for this investigation. So after that baseline program was, was defined with the help of the regulators, we began a two-year baseline monitoring program in Nantucket Sound in accordance with that, that, that plan. We completed two Benthic surveys this year and completed an eelgrass survey in that larger box that I showed on the previous slide this fall. We completed the first year of baseline water quality monitoring. That's at three locations, shown on this figure, for a number of parameters, and that was May through October of this year. We were also sampling our plant effluent. And we will be doing this for, for one more year as part of our baseline program. We have received very encouraging results from, initial results from the aquifer evaluation. The United States Geological Survey has modeled the effect on the aquifer of discharging to an outfall instead of to land. That figure on the right is just showing the contours of the aquifer. That's not a modeling result. The USGS has a very thorough peer review process, so we actually don't expect to get the final report from them until July of 2025. But the initial results of that evaluation have been reviewed with the town and with the Water Management Act personnel. They regulate the drinking water supply for the town, and the initial feedback from them was very positive. We've completed the permit application process for marine soil borings. The goal of the soil borings is to characterize the soils for outfall design. The outfall will be installed using directional drilling, and we're going to, the plan is to start from Kite Park. So there will be one boring conducted in Kite Park and six offshore. The borings will be six inches in diameter and 100 feet deep. We'll use a barge, like the one in the bottom right corner of that slide, to do the offshore borings. The estimated duration is about one month to complete the borings. There is some potential for noise during that boring effort, particularly with the closer-to-shore borings. Those, the plan is to conduct those this winter, certainly not in the summer season. The outfall schedule, we want to, we plan to complete the baseline data collection in 2025. Apply for and receive permits is a long process. We've already started, and we expect to continue through 2028. We expect to complete the draft environmental impact report by early 2026, the final environmental impact report, and designing the outfall by 2028, and construct the outfall from 2029 to 2032. If we can do it faster, obviously we will, but this is the reasonable schedule. I wanted to summarize by saying that the outfall is a key element for restoration of our coastal pond water quality. All the green dots on this figure are septic systems. Those are existing septic systems. The pink area is the easternmost edge of our current sewer area on Mera Vista Peninsula. So you can see that the, the septic system effluent from all those septic systems moves with the groundwater out into the coastal ponds and then out into Nantucket Sound. Sewering these densely developed areas, treating the wastewater to a very high level, and then discharging that to an outfall will decrease nitrogen to the coastal ponds and to Nantucket Sound. And that's the summary. Thank you.
The Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alan Robinson, and I'm Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We have been a seven-member committee. We are now a nine-member committee, thanks to approval from the, from the Select Board. There are two vacancies which we are working to fill, and applications can be submitted at this time. It's been a good six months that, really, from throughout the town, there's, there's improvement, improvements that we can point to. All the Falmouth schools are now, public schools are now composting cafeteria food scraps. We thank Lori Dur and her staff. It's going very, very well. The second community food scrap drop-off station is up and running, and many people are using it. There's been a series of pop-up drop-off events partnered by Department of Public Works and this, and our committee. The textiles and clothing is a two, is twice-a-year program. This past, this past month, we collected 14,000 pounds of textiles and clothing in a two-week, in a two-day period. And we're having the first-ever rigid plastic drop-off and styrofoam drop-off. The rigid plastic is ongoing at Waste Management Facility, and the styrofoam is this coming Saturday morning at Morse Pond School. Improvements to the Waste Management Facility and the leaf compost facility operations and appearance are going, are ongoing. If you drive around, you, all of you drive around town, and you look at our arteries at Gifford Street, at Thomas Landers Road, and others, there's less litter. There's less litter. The Department of Public Works has really stepped up its efforts in picking up litter along our arteries. The, there are many members of our community who are routinely picking up litter, and your actions, approving the nip band, the plastic bag band, and others, has really made a difference. There's less litter getting onto our streets. So it's very much appreciated, and it's, there's still work to be done. We're really, as a town, really leading the cape in improving and reducing litter. We're working very hard, together with Department of Public Works and, and with the schools, in strategic outreach to the community via press releases, social media, making news and having it reported, presentations in the Talking Trash column. And thanks to you all, and thanks to you all, we now have a full-time solid waste coordinator, and that makes a great difference in a lot of those bullets and making that happen. The town is moving forward with trash collection, and the concept is to automate it as we have with, as we have with the recycling. The town administration has requested the trash collection vendor to provide a cost estimate to automate curbside collection, similarly to the recycling collection. If the proposal is satisfactory, pricing will be incorporated into the fiscal year 2026 budget to be acted on, operating budget to be acted on by spring 2025 town meeting. And if that does move forward, implementation may be as soon as summer 2025. We've done surveys before of you, and we've got a, some survey questions for a very quick response here right tonight, because response here right tonight, because we are we as a committee are seeking to learn as much as we can about the practices of solid waste management and the opinions and actions. So we've got some quick questions. Everyone in the auditorium, you don't have to be a town meeting member, can show put their hand up yes on these. The first is, how many people showing of hands compost kitchen scraps at home? Great, great. How about do you compost on your property? Show of hands, a great number. How many use the two food scrap drop-off stations? A lesser number, but a good number. And how many use the food scrap collection service that's available? Great. The numbers are increasing. We did we asked these questions 12 months ago, and I'm certain that there are more hands up today than there were 12 months ago, and that's great. So our focus for 2025, really it's the same, it's really building on what we've been working on over the last, really, several years. Continue to build community interest and participation in food scrap separation and composting. Work towards implementation of a regional food waste composting facility at Joint Base Cape Cod. And you know, somehow, one of the slides somehow must have been bypassed. Let me tell you about what's going on with Joint Base Cape Cod. The town is part is informally partnering with Bourne Sandwich and Mashpee and the county in in a study where the county got a grant to do it.
Mr. Chairman, we hit the five minutes. You want to request a specific amount of additional time?
Two minutes, please.
Two minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Additional two minutes.
Thank you. The study of a proof of concept for a parcel on Joint Base Cape Cod should be done by the end of this year, and once that study is done, then the addressing of the items that this will bring up. Which political entity will lead this effort? Will will be able to meet the requirements of Joint Base Cape Cod for a non-military operation on the base? Where will the funding come from? And so forth. But it is something that's progressing. We're very happy with the county's leadership right now in this in this initial proof of concept study. So we'll be working very much on that and working with you, certainly in the future, on that. We will be working to support the town's consideration and introduction of a new approach to curbside collection, and we'll work to reach and engage the entire community in trash tonnage reduction. And that's it. Thank you very much for this opportunity.[776.88][776.88](APPLAUSE).
Okay, are there any other committees I don't have on the list? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion, except for the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. The next one is Article 5. Article 5 is the capital improvements. Mr. Chairman, for the main motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 5 as recommended with the following amendments. If you're all ready for this, there are six amendments. And it starts on page, we'll deal with page six, and I'm going to do these in an order so you can follow along, and I'll explain why we're doing these. The first item is change the free cash in the revenue section under the recommendation The second one, if you go down a little bit further to that same section, change the ever-source grant for ever-source cabling project from $700,000 to $1 million. Okay? So now, the next item is the wetlands reserve receipts for $26,500. We're deleting that. That's why the free cash increased. The wetlands receipts reserve fund cannot be used for such an activity. It's only administrative, so we have to take it out of free cash. Okay? The next item is actually on page seven. It's about a third of the way down. Change district-wide floor repair and replacement. You all see that? From $300,000 to $173,495. Okay? The next item, you go down a little bit further, about the middle of the page. Change ever-source cabling project from $800,000 to $1,100,000. We increase that by that amount because ever-source provided an additional $300,000 of funding for these projects. That was the second change we did in the revenue from 700 to 1 million. Okay? The next item there, the number six, go all the way down almost to the bottom to water mains. We're changing water mains from $3 million to $2,929,929,800. That's $2,929,800. Okay? The reason we're changing the district-wide floor repair and replacement into water mains is because you will notice on Article 6 on the next page, we have appropriated money for those two projects from other bonding sources and a water stabilization. If we didn't reduce those amounts, it would be a double appropriation. So the new total for Article 5, after all of that, if you're ready, $16,186,790. $16,186,790.
Okay, so the main motion is as recommended with the changes that the Finance Committee just gave us, and we're going to have a general presentation on capital budget, and then when we get into this, we'll go section by section like we usually do, and you can ask questions or make any amendments. It's not subject to the two amendment limit because it's an omnibus budget. But also, behind the creation of the capital budget is our new Finance Director, who is up here with us, Laura Citron. Welcome to Falmouth as our new Finance Director.[1071.33][1071.33](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Town Meeting. So for those of you who I haven't met yet, I see a lot of familiar faces, but congratulations to the new Town Meeting members. My name is Mike Renshaw, your Town Manager. I'm very proud to have the opportunity tonight to present the fiscal year 25 proposed capital plan and budget. As you all know, the presentation and preparation of the plan is a very long process. It actually began back in April with my budget instructions to the departments. I want to thank at this time, because it's important, there are a lot of people to thank. I want to thank the Assistant Town Manager, the Finance Director, past and present, Laura Citron, the new Finance Director, the Select Board, all of the department managers for their preparation and work on the budget, and the Finance Committee for their work and collaboration in the preparation of this budget. I've got about seven slides, and I'm going to try to get through very quickly. As with any good plan, as you know, a capital improvement plan begins with a solid foundation based upon well-established guiding principles and priorities. The priorities shown on this slide, the five kind of guiding principles or priorities, are taken directly from the town's fiscal policy, which, for your information, was most recently updated on April 1 of 2024 by the Select Board. These are in no particular order. I'm sorry, I think I've gone past my... Sorry about that. These are in no particular order, these five guiding principles, but I'll start with the first being the ensuring that we, as a town, address any imminent threats to the health and safety of citizens, employees, or town property. The second guiding principle is ensuring that we preserve existing operational levels, operational readiness. The third is making sure that we meet any legal requirements of federal or state agencies. The fourth is improvement of our existing infrastructure, which, as you all know, includes the physical condition of our assets, and ensuring efficient and effective operation of those assets. And lastly, we look for the improvement in the efficiency and effectiveness of how we deliver services to residents and visitors of the town. Want to shift and spend a moment talking about funding sources. As you all know, free cash is typically the largest source of funding in a capital plan such as ours. That being said, our goal as a management team is always to minimize the use of that free cash and boost our reserves. Free cash certification at present is $22,953,738. For reference or context, last year's free cash certification was about $23.8 million, so a little bit less. Again, to minimize the use of this free cash and to boost those reserves, we seek to reappropriate where possible balances from prior capital appropriations. In this particular, in this FY25 proposed budget, we're looking to for authorization to reappropriate $492,491. Embarkation funds, the use of embarkation funds in the amount of $90,000 for improvements for bicyclists and pedestrians on the Shining Sea Bikeway. And lastly, looking to leverage grants, special revenues, and other funding sources, again, in order to maximize the use of non-free cash to address the priorities and maximize our reserves. Importantly, while our reserves continue to be very strong, we're always attempting to grow those reserves of free cash to levels that are similar to other Cape communities. Want to talk a little bit about, the Chairman of Finance Committee mentioned some of these numbers, so they're a bit redundant, but I want to talk a little bit about Article 5 specifically, the capital spending article, and talk about some of those funding sources as amended. Free cash, as Keith mentioned, $13,972,949. This, as he mentioned, was a late change due to funding source change for the Cedar Lake Herbicide Project. Special revenues, this budget proposes the use of $721,350. We're looking for the reappropriation, again, of funds from prior capital appropriations, transfers from those existing articles, again, in that amount of $492,491. And lastly, grants and donations, always a good source to leverage. We're looking, we're proposing to utilize a million dollars. In total, the total funded requests under Article 5 of this FY25 proposed capital budget, Included within that, I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, I wanted to mention the total funding requests by all of the departments were that number of $19,374,790. There was about $3.1 million of requests that weren't funded. As you all know, budgeting is about choices and trying to prioritize and making best use of our resources. About $3.1 million of requests at the department level were not funded. Want to shift gears and talk a little bit about Article 6 funding. Article 6 funding refers to the request to vote to transfer inappropriate funds in the amount of $70,200 from the Water Stabilization Fund for the water main project that we've been discussing over the past couple of years. $126,505 is being proposed in this Article 6 from the T-Ticket Roof Unused Bonds Fund, again, for district-wide floor replacement and repair within the school district. And again, the total Article 6 funding is $196,705. The big takeaway in this particular slide, again, is making sure that we're leveraging and utilizing other funding sources to minimize the use of free cash and continue to bolster our free cash balances. Want to spend just a moment talking about some of the additional funding requests. The transfer from free cash to the capital and debt stabilization, shown in Article 11, of $3.5 million. There's 15 items in article in an article that don't meet our capital threshold or definition, and for reference, that definition is $25,000 or more in cost in five years or more of lifespan. And there's $828,900 represented, again, in those 15 items that don't quite meet that capital threshold. Falmouth Retirement Report Special Military Fund, Article 29, we're proposing $75,000. An annual request is to raise and appropriate for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, Article 7, that sum of $950,000. And lastly, there's $659,620 represented in the Community Preservation Committee for a total funding amount of $6,013,520. So in conclusion, as with last year's capital plan budget, we're really seeking to balance the need to maintain our existing equipment and infrastructure within the limitations of our available funding, and equally importantly, within the bandwidth and capacity of our staff to carry out successfully those capital projects. The proposals represent the very upper limit of what we can afford to spend while maintaining and hopefully, again, building those cash reserves. Importantly, as the Town Manager, I believe that this proposed capital spending plan meets the needs of the town, and importantly, is aligned with the Select Board strategic plan goals and key focus areas. Again, I want to thank all of the staff involved, just a tremendous amount of work beginning in April of this year to build this plan. And on behalf of the staff, I want to thank each of you, as Town Meeting members, for your thoughtful deliberation and consideration of this fiscal year 25 capital budget. Thank you very much.[1572.36][1572.36](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Okay, any general questions before we go into the line items? Okay, we'll start with the revenue sources. Any questions on the revenue sources? Under the expense side, the Select Board and Town Meeting. Planning board. Facilities. Oh, Mr. Neto?
I have a question. I didn't understand how you were going through this. So I'd like to go back to the, if you would, rooftop solar at East Falmouth Fire Station?
Okay, yeah, under Select Board, Town Meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
My question is, if the regulatory, what were the regulations that prevented us from putting the rooftop solar on Hatchville, yet we're going to do it to the East Falmouth Fire Station, which is great, I'm all fathers, and they're about two miles away? So if I could have an explanation of what regulatory criteria the Hatchville Station didn't meet, but the East Falmouth Fire Station can? That's all my questions.
Okay, our Assistant Town Manager?
Peter Johnson-Staub, Assistant Town Manager. Thank you for the question, Mr. Neto. So it is the same regulation with the same impact. We had initially planned a larger installation of solar at the Hatchville Station, and the specific regulation in question limits net metering to 25,000 kilowatts. So we reduced the size of the Hatchville to 25,000 kilowatts, and we had already purchased the solar, the additional solar panels. Those surplus panels that were left over are going on the East Falmouth Fire Station.
Okay, police? Yeah, over here, my left.
Hi, thank you. Max, Precinct 3. I have a question. I asked this at my precinct meeting, and I was hoping I could get another answer. According to the request form, the police are increasing their firearms from 73 to 100. I was wondering if somebody could tell me why there was a 37% increase in the number of pistols?
So Jeff Laurie, here, Police Chief, proud resident, Precinct 4. So basically, certain officers are issued two firearms, me being one of them, detectives, administration. The other is, I don't know if you recall, several years ago, we had an officer-involved shooting. The state police still have those two firearms, so we need to make sure we have some surplus. Right now, and I have my team with me here... Right now, and I have my team with me here, my firearms team leader, we're seeing these guns, and Detective Porter, if you could come forward and explain, we're having malfunctions with these weapons, so when that happens, we have to reissue another weapon. If you can explain, Detective Porter?
Tess, you're up.
So we're currently, our current pistols are approximately 14 years old, and they're at end of life. They've had maintenance done to them already, and we're starting to see failures where pieces of metal are actually breaking on them. We've been, in the 14 years that we've had them, we've never had, like, slide releases breaking on them. I've replaced four in the last year, year and a half. So, the firearms are at end of life, and we're at the point that we need to purchase new ones.
If I could clarify, I'm not opposed to replacing the 73-old firearms. I'm wondering why or how you arrived at the number of 100?
Just from what I told you, that several officers are issued two firearms, so we're, 67 sworn, so that's 67. There are several of us that have two firearms issued to us, so then, now we're basically probably up into the 80s to 90s, and we're going to be growing the department, and we have malfunctions, and if we do have something happens, we need spare firearms to issue to our staff.
So what is the, what's the number? You said there's 67 officers?
We're 67 officers sworn now, and several of us, I don't, do you have an exact number of how many are issued two?
I believe right now that there's, there's five people issued two, but I think the plan going forward is to increase that to include admin, because we added the Deputy Chief position, for example, and other administrative positions, sir.
So 67 plus five currently, 72, increase that by 10 is 82, and the other 18 are redundant? Or they're just extra?
They're just spare firearms in case something happens.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else under the Police? Fire Department?
I think there's one question up here.
Where's, oh, on the back left, yeah. Kind of standard, I can't really see particularly if you're under the overhead.
Sorry about that. Leslie Littenstein, Precinct 8. I was just wondering if we could have a status update on a study for the new police station? I would really hate to wait until we had that hurricane that nobody wants to have that wipes out the old one before we get a new one. So, could we just have a little idea of how that's moving forward? Thank you.
Just real briefly, we're in, we're in progress. We've hired an OPM. We've had, I believe, five accounting firms that put in, we'll be interviewing them, picking an accountant, we'll then do a feasibility study, and then, we'll be before you next spring, hopefully. We want out too, trust me.
Chief, thank you. One other comment I'd like to make is an update. December 2nd, I believe, Select Board is going to be considering candidates for the Citizen Advisory Group that's going to be assisting in the site location. So I think that's an important update.
Anything else under the Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. My name is Todd Taylor from Precinct 6. I held this line item in Article 5 under the capital improvements for clarification on the expenditure. First, the line item states on page 6 of our warrant booklets, 1.3 million for fire engines and equipment. However, in the explanation, it states the monies will be used for the replacement of a 2009 engine. Also, the explanation states this expenditure is for the replacement of a 2009 engine. This is a spare engine we have in town that has 59,000 miles on it. Meanwhile, there's an older engine in service in town, it's a 1996 engine with over 91,000 miles on it, that's used on a daily basis. It states in the project description that this is necessary for the safety of our firefighters and the citizens of our community. I would argue that the 1996 engine is not safer for our community and our firefighters. So why aren't we replacing the 1996 engine that is 13 years older and not in very good condition? The previous fire chief publicly stated back in 2019 that the 1996 engine was a piece of junk, and it was at the end of its life. Here we are, five years later, and that engine is still in operation today. I ask that you reconsider how this money is spent. I would hope that we would be replacing the oldest engine in the fleet rather than the one that's 13 years newer and has less miles. I'd like to make a simple amendment. Is that possible, Mr. Moderator?
Depends if it's within the scope.
I'd just like to change the engine number from, or the, excuse me, the year of the engine, 2009, to change it to the 1996.
As, as you and I spoke on the phone last week, that is not part of the motion. That is in an explanatory sheet in the back of your warrant booklet. So what is, here is fire engines and equipment, 1.3 million dollars. Further, further discussion on the fire?
Hi, good evening. Paul Sellers, Precinct 6. Also, just echoing Todd's comments regarding that engine, and I was struck by the town manager reviewing the slide regarding the priorities for spending, and the first two really kind of stick out in this situation. The first being, of course, imminent threat to health and safety, and the second being the preservation of operations. I think he also mentioned that the capital, we have more spending that didn't meet the capital budget because the items would be in service for less than 15 years? Is that, I think, correct? So the, we're looking at a situation where we're need to consider how long the engine that has the 90,000-plus miles on it is going to last. And we're in that situation where this is a frontline vehicle servicing the community, and we really need to balance what priorities are necessary to keep the operations for public safety going forward. So I guess I would just ask the Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, to take a harder look at this line item and make a decision about which engine is the most likely one that we need to replace to keep our safety of the community in the forefront. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, in the center. Mr. Donahue? With the, with the microphone, please.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. Could the fire chief come and explain to us why you want to do the 91, the oldest, the newer engine want to replace that one rather than the oldest one? Wouldn't that help solve everybody's mind? Thank you.
Good evening. Fire Chief Timothy Smith, Precinct 6. With regards to how we go about purchasing and planning for apparatus and vehicle replacement, we have a very strong vehicle replacement process that's made in conjunction with my senior staff and my mechanic division. Mechanics evaluate all of our vehicles, and together, we make recommendations for going forward and making these recommendations in our capital plan. And our current plan is to replace the 2009 apparatus, because that type of apparatus in specification design will take 41 to 43 months for delivery once we sign the contract and we go ahead, pending on the approval by Town Meeting this evening. Much time has been spent going over all of these vehicles, and we have specific specifications, and the cost for this particular vehicle is, if we were to put it off another year, it's going to continue to increase, and we felt that this was a responsible thing to do. And the vehicle itself is also, has sustained quite a bit of frame issues that we're monitoring, and we felt it was prudent to go ahead and replace this vehicle. The oldest vehicle that's been referred to, we are planning on replacing that for 2025, and we'll come back to this Town Meeting and ask for specific funds at that time. But this is the process that we're following, and we would ask for your support for this, our particular cost within this particular line. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, John Neto, Precinct 9. Because, I'm confused as to why we cannot amend this article per se.
You can, you can amend the motion, and all of the information that's in the back of the book is not part of the motion. That's explanatory information that you all yelled about you wanted, and they gave it to you, but it's not part of the motion.
Well, my question is, is this the format that we have in Article 5, whereas if this fire truck or this expenditure of 1.3 million had been written as an article, as a separate standalone article, would that have been able to be amended then?
Depends what the language of that article was. If it just said for fire engines and equipment, then no. If it said for the 2000-whatever, 19-something, da-da-da-da-da, specific, then you've got language in the motion that you can amend.
Oh, okay, so it is the format of this presentation. So then the only thing-
Which is the standard format we've been using at least for the last 20 years.
Well, maybe not 20, because I remember the old format. I can't be that old, can I?
Oh, you are. You were here before me, I've been here for 26.
So the only thing that we have control of then in this presentation on this Article 5 is the financial, the money figure? We can increase it, decrease it, zero it, is that correct?
Yeah, increase it, decrease it, strike it out, yep.
As a Town Meeting member that we have, then I think we should, to the Board of Selectmen, this Town Meeting member would like to take a good look at that, because now you're telling me that we've lost some control of what is our responsibility, which is the funds that we raise and appropriate for the town of Falmouth. Thank you.
Further under Fire? Mr. Enchell? A microphone over here, if you could just stand so they can see who's looking for the mic. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. No, he's right, okay. He was right behind you, he didn't know where you were sitting.
Bob Enchell, Precinct 6. I think as Town Meeting members, we are fulfilling our responsibility by supporting the town manager and the department she is. We can't micro-manage every single item here. We hire fire chiefs, we hire police chiefs, we have a finance committee, it's good, we can question it, we can question anything. But the work that's gone into the preparation of this article is tremendous. So I would hope that as we go through the articles, we look at the big picture, not whether it's 1996 or 1894. Let's talk about what the recommendations of the department has. We don't like it, vote no. If you don't, if you like it, vote yes. Let's give them a vote of confidence. We've done a lot of work to do, let's get on with it.
Consolidated Communications Department. Marine and Environment. See a hand over here on my right?
Thank you, Andrew Ashton, Precinct 1. I wanted to ask about this Eel Pond dredging project right here, and I'm curious about how long that's going to last. I'm going to estimate less than 15 years, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, he's trying to get the mic to work.
Yeah. The question was, how long was the project going to last? The, the, the physical dredging is about probably no more than two weeks because it's 5,000, thereabouts, cubic yards, and we have to have the dredging done by January 15th, which is the, when the time of year fish restrictions kick in.
I think his, I think his question is, how long until the sand goes back in? How long until you fill it up with sand again?
How long before waves and tides fill that thing right back in like it has done already?
There's no way for us to actually know that. We're at, this dredging is actually taking about 35 feet of the tip of Washburn's Island off. We haven't done that before, so we won't know how quickly that is going to want to go back to its original position.
Ms. O'Connell? Yeah, Ms. O'Connell, I think it's, no, it's Ms. Freitag, sorry.
Freitag.
Freitag, sorry.
Freitag. It's been 20 years.
We need better lights, they went into these LED lights, and I can't see you people anymore.
I, I can't see either, because I'm getting old. But, hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Melissa Freitag, Precinct 6. Again, a question for the harbor master, please. Hi, Greg. Do we have state permits already? Because I know when I was on the Concom, we were, you know, you folks were asking us this and looking at where all the sediment was actually flowing and not flowing, it looked like the, I mean, it's, it's a barrier beach, and barrier beaches continue to grow, and it is state property, so do we have all the permits in place already?
Yes, in fact, we just, we were waiting for the DCR construction permit that allows us to put county equipment on Washburns. The spoils here are going up on Washburns because we're taking, obviously, state land while we're doing the dredging. So, yes, all the permits are in place, the only thing we need is the funding, and the county is committed to be here mobilized in Falmouth around the 1st of December.
And, and if I may follow up, are you basically going to be dredging exactly where, I think it was Bob, cut through? I mean, that opened, something like that opens and closes with any whim of a hurricane coming our way?
Yeah, this is a relatively small dredging project. It's just to take, what's happened is the island's accreted into the permitted channel, so this will be taking 35 feet of the island off, maintaining the channel at the original depth, width, and then we're going to have to see what happens from here on out. The large project, which we, which was not funded by CZM, was to take a much larger section of the spit off. Now, we'll be talking with the town to decide what we're going to do with that project, probably at the April Town Meeting, because we did not get the funding from CZM to do
Anything else under Marine and Environment? The School Department? DPW Administration and Engineering? Highway? Oh, yeah, DPW?
All right, Andrew Ashton, Precinct 2, again. I'm going to ask about the coastal erosion here on Great Pond. This looks like a study that's going to invest us in many, perhaps many millions of dollars to kind of address some of these erosion spots. I'm a coastal geologist at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, that's why I keep raising my hands, for the coastal things, and I'd just like to wonder, you know, I've, I've seen presentations when I was on the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, and there's kind of areas of erosion, areas of growth here. As a geologist, we know that's because there's a bunch of bumps moving down the shoreline, and I hope that we kind of address this in a way that deals with the way nature operates, and it's not that there's a mystery of what the erosion causes along that pond arc. So, could we have more explanation for what the long-term goals of that project is if we're going to continue with this as a budget item?
Mr. McConney?
Good evening. Peter McConney, Director of Public Works, Precinct 8. This project started back in 2012. We had some erosion in coastal, of the, of the coastal bank. How it started is we started closing portions of the road down, there was trucks, delivery trucks, trash trucks, construction trucks going along the roadway. We closed portions of the road down several years later. It became very clear that we had to close additional portions of the road down, and then 2018, we closed the remainder of the road down. The only portions of Great Bay Street that's open at this time are any residences that have a driveway on Great Bay Street. So, we continued to have some additional erosion along the bank. Public Works did what they, we could do, we did some more repairs this past spring. There's several areas along the bank that are in need of repair. There's several areas along the bank that are in need of repair. We had our consultant give us an estimate to do a proposal for looking at the bank and concepts, not design, not permanent, concepts of the bank. It was a large sum of money, so we reduced that cost to this cost here, to look at only the areas of the bank that were in need of repair. So what will happen is, if this is approved, our consultant will go out and do a concept review of this area, of these areas. They will come back with a concepts of repairs and how to fix the erosion. And then from there, it will go into, if this town decides to move forward with the repairs, it'll go into design, permitting, and then construction. It is true that this road could cost many millions of dollars to have repaired. So we're looking at this as a piece-by-piece approach, not to look at the whole roadway, but the areas that are in need of repair at this time. But this item is for our consultant to go out and do a review of the bank and the areas that need attention.
Ms. Freitag?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Freitag, Precinct 6. And I'm going to attach some comments on to Mr. Ashton's questions, because I too served on the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee with him. I wanted to point out, Mr. McConity, that as you know, this is a $180,000 appropriation request to do a study to come up with ideas for 700 feet, 700 feet of coastal road. Falmouth has 72 miles of roadway that are at risk for the next, over the next couple of decades. So I just want to remind town meeting that this is either going to be death by 72,000 cuts, or we have to come up with some kind of better plan, instead of just sort of reinforcing things and watching everything, a roadway around it. Okay, so please, maybe Mr. McCon, when we have our Coastal Resiliency Director, hopefully we'll have a more coherent plan.
I can offer this, is that the roadway is a private road. The town owns from the bank to the center of the road. The residences own from their property to the center of the road. The portions that are being eroded are on the bank or on the town side.
Okay. Anything else under DPW Admin Engineering? Mr. Donahue?
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. This sounds like we're in a no-wind situation. Is the ocean going to eventually take this road away, and is there an alternate way for the people that are on that road to get access to it in any way?
So, as I said, in 2012, we began the process of closing the road down. It was an actual road that could be traversed by vehicles and trucks. We started closing it down in 2018. We closed the remainder of the portion that could be closed. It's not the coastal wave action. It's the prevailing wind that comes up and does the erosion of the bank, and that's what we're looking at. We've been through town meeting, had presentations over the past 12 years, five, six, I personally did five or six presentations on that. The last, the last estimate that we had to repair the portions of this road was over $7 million with today's construction funds. Typically, you add four to 5% per year for construction funds and inflation. So this is something that we have areas throughout town. This is a private road. The residences across the street are looking to protect their properties, but it's something as a town that we're going to be facing. We need to evaluate this. We have many areas in town. Great Bay's not the only one. It's a walking path right now. We have all the south-facing beaches. We have the bridges. We have Grand Ave. We have Surf Drive. All the south-facing beaches, we're facing the same. Last year was a detrimental year for Falmouth with the storms that we received.
Okay, Highway? Oh, yep, somebody back there. I can't see here. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I wish to speak to the last item for the Great Bay Street. First of all, I would like to say, there is a little bit of disagreement, and I think a little more research needs to be done. It's been presented this evening that Great Bay Street is a private road, that the town owns to the middle of the street and from the bank, the coastal bank, and that the property owners on the other side own to the middle of the street. And I believe documentation was provided to the town manager's office, and we certainly have been working with them, that a town meeting vote was taken in 1947 by, to donate that street to the town, and it was approved in 1947. However, it wasn't accepted until 1954, at which time the deed was presented, and there were three restrictions in that deed. And we have all that information. It has been forwarded to the town manager's office. So that is a huge consideration in that we, the residents of that area and people who walk there every day, have done their, in due diligence, their research, and for all of us, and I'm a lifelong resident of that area, that the town actually owns all of that, and it isn't a private road. And it's all the documentation from the DPW books and so on and so forth. So, you know, we just hope that you would take that in consideration and do a little more research on that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Highway? Fleet Services? Wastewater?
Yeah. Hi, Tom Digness from Precinct 3, and specifically of the two wastewater ones. I'm wondering about, it's a question on the outfall. Data collect and permitting, Phase 1 expand. So the question is, it's relating to this cost override, basically, of $430,000. How much did, was the original estimate for that Phase 1 data collection and permitting? And if we do approve the additional $430,000, is that it for data collection and permitting? Or is there a Phase 2 and a Phase 3 and a Phase whatever? So that is a question. How much did we budget originally for it, and are we going to be budgeting more in advance?
Ms. Tho?
It was about $1.2 million, and the increase was associated with primarily the expansion of the survey area and the increased number of samples within that area. We expect right now for this to be a two-year baseline data collection, data collection plan, and we plan to move from that into the environmental review and permitting phase. I cannot guarantee that the regulators will not ask for more data beyond that, but that is what we expect for this baseline data phase.
So I think what I'm hearing is this $430,000 is it for data collection with the increase in area and the number of spent examples?
This is it for our baseline data collection. If the town moves forward with an outfall, we will have to continue to collect data.
Way in the back.
Hi, Lynn Chad, Precinct 3.
Hold on, to my left, and then we'll go across. You can keep the mic. You'll be next.
Malcolm Donald, Precinct 6. How much will the design and construction be for the outfall pipe?
The current estimate is $80 million to construct the outfall. We would set aside about 10%, 8 to 10% of that for design ahead of that.
Apparently, we have seven future service areas in town that we're looking to take care of. And if you figure 60 million a service area times 7 is 420 million, plus the outfall pipe is 80 million, it puts us at $500 million for the outfall and the sewer. Now, we have no estimate for all the sewer, all the future sewer and outfall, well, future sewers projects, so I'm just estimating this. So, it's a lot of money. This old technology, the current sewer technology is old technology, and it requires flushing drinking water down the drain. So what we're proposing to do is pump all the sewage up to West Falmouth, and then pump it back to Falmouth and put it out, an outfall pipe. Now, in a urine diversion proposal to service the Acapescot Sewer Area, which was prepared for last November's town meeting by Nutrient Systems of Portland Oregon, showed that such a system would cost a quarter of the sewer. Now, in addition, urine diversion-
Mr. Donald, do you have a specific question or an amendment for this?
Yes, I have an amendment. I'd like to change the figure to zero.
Okay, we have the motion to strike $430,000. Any discussion on the amendment to strike the line item? Hearing none, the question will come on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it by a majority. Okay, the woman to my right?
Lynn Chad, Precinct 3. This actually goes back to Fleet Services. I didn't catch you first time around. But my question is, why is the Mack dump truck and the forestry truck $350,000 each? And my second question is, given that Falmouth is a green community, are we considering any of these vehicles to be either electric or hybrids? Thank you.
Hello, Edwin Rivera, Fleet Manager. The two Mack trucks are expensive only because they're outfitted for plowing. Actually, one of them is outfitted for plowing and sanding. The other Mack truck is outfitted for a bucket truck for the forestry department. And yes, we have looked at trying to get some electric vehicles in, but we need work trucks, not supervisors' trucks right now. And that's what I would suggest that the electric vehicles would be.
Okay, anything else under Fleet? Water Department? Replacing carpet recreation or turf field recreation?
Jed Goldstone, Precinct 2. In the original, this is addressing the turf field, the explanation is for engineering, additional costs for engineering. Our original discussion of this previous, this is previous town meeting, for the $100,000 that was appropriated, was for planning. I haven't seen any plans, and it seems like engineering is something before we have plans for it, is putting the cart before the horse. So I'd like some description as to whether or not we have planning before we have engineering.
Mr. Johnson's up.
So, this project had to be put on hold due to staff workload considerations, and we have not forgotten the need to engage in a real planning discussion and evaluation of the various material options in terms of, you know, the products and their contents. And Mr. Goldstone and I had a conversation about that dialogue and using his expertise in toxicology to take a look at that. So, we are still in the beginning phases, but in order to enter a contract for the planning and design, which would all be with the same firm, we're seeking this additional funding to know that we have the funding to get to, go through the planning process, go through the design process, so that when we come back to town meeting, if we come back to town meeting, it would be for construction.
Discussion Recreation? Shepherd? I'll edge the list. I'd miss Shepherd first.
Susan Shepherd, Precinct 1. Both of these recreation items raise questions. The first one, why would we replace carpet anywhere? Carpet just gets spoiled and has to be torn up and replaced again, and it also does make some people sick. The second question on the turf field, again, is, I don't think we should even be looking at that. Why are we putting more plastic into the ground? We should not be doing that. We're polluting everywhere with plastic. Let's go back to good old dirt. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fame and Silva?
Sandy Fame and Silva, Precinct 2. My sentiments are similar. I am opposed to these artificial turf fields. I think that there is not a trade-off with the cost of labor versus the efficiency of an artificial turf field when we're talking about substances that have been shown by research to have detrimental health consequences for people that use them, and we're talking about our children that use them. I recommend that we change this article or amend this article to state affirmatively that this is going to be a turf field and not an artificial turf field, a grass field. It's not clear in the description that it will be a grass field.
Yeah. They always say turf field on these things when it's the artificial turf. An appropriate amendment would be to strike the line item. Do you want to make that amendment?
Yes, I recommend that we strike the line item.
Okay, so the amendment is to strike the turf field line item for $100,000. Discussion on the amendment. Ms. Segal on the amendment? Debra Whitehead, I'll edge you the list. I'm going through the list that I had. Richard, you're on the list.
Deborah Segal, Precinct 6. I'd like to speak in support of the amendment to strike that. In addition to the environmental and the health concerns, there are cost concerns when these things are put in. There are communities that have decided not to use them, to tear them out, and that has a huge cost to it. So, I think the cost plus the environmental and health hazards to our children mean that we should vote in favor of this amendment to strike it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leidmer? I'll get you on the list. I'll get you on the list.
Hello, Richard Latimer, Precinct 1. I'm probably more familiar with this grass in Trotting Park than anyone else because back around 1959, my first real summer job was with the park department. I mowed that grass. And I also knew the old park that went around there was an actual park. That was one of our first recreation areas. And those old guys that had the horses and buggies and would ride around that track, they'd be appalled at this idea. Look at economics. Let's leave aside the question of health and safety, just plain economics. Now, the park department says, well, it's taxing their staff to have to do this, so let's go spend, what, $100,000 now, million something when they put it in? Huh? All that money gets sucked out of our town? Let's hire some more people for the park department to take care of it. Look, when I was mowing that grass, I made a buck fifty an hour. And I would take them, that was good money back then. You could buy a house for around $10,000. And I would spend my money. I'd go to Max Cohen, I'd buy my underwear, I'd go to Isaacson's Amelchance, buy my clothes. Sure, I'd go to Pafford's, it's waste a lot of money, but, you know, those were local businessmen that would get my money. Instead of having a million dollars sucked out of this town, going who knows where, and maybe somebody else who lives in this town could use that job mowing that grass, he'd keep the money in town and he'd spend it here. This idea of spending this kind of money just to save, what, a couple of hours a week for some, you know, existing park department laborer? When it'd make much more sense just to go hire another laborer to do that work, and we'd save, what, millions of dollars? Because that money would stay in town. I say vote this article down. Excuse me. Vote the amendment up. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cuny?
Sandra Cuny, Precinct 2. Vice Chair of the Recreation Committee. The Recreation Committee supports this line item. We had an athletic study done back in 2017, you all know. Back then, it said we needed nine new grass fields or three turf fields. We have one turf field at the high school. Can the high school tell us, are there injuries? Are there children being put at risk? No, this is not just about the money, this is about being able to play on the fields for a longer period of time without doing them any damage. We have to close fields now to let them rest. So it's not just DPW, it's not just mowing the lawn, it's we need the fields to be able to rest our grass fields. We want one turf field to start. And let's see how it goes. Thank you very much. I hope you keep the line item in, $100,000. We've been waiting a long time. Thank you.
Ms. Whitehead, I'll add you to the list.
Jim Callahan?
No, 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 I said I'll add you to the list. I've got a big list.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
Yeah, Ms. Whitehead.
Hi, my name is Lynn Whitehead, Precinct 1. I just have some bullets, and it won't take too long. I spoke on this, I think, when we were trying to do the turf hill before. Since then, I've got granddaughters who play soccer continually, and they go from state to state because they're involved with not only the town, but also club soccer. So I've seen a lot of different fields. Okay, bullet one. It's already known that synthetic turf is made up of chemicals that are carcinogens and PFAS forever chemicals. These turfs have to be disposed of about every eight to 10 years, and their disposal is a known problem with the environment, and we're supposed to be a green community. These companies make enormous amounts of money for fossil fuel and chemical companies. Unfortunately, synthetic turf has a large carbon footprint due to their fossil fuel ingredients, their chemical emissions during plastic carpet manufacture, and the methane and ethylene greenhouse gas emissions as they break down in place. In addition, a number of the chemical components of the turf surfaces are soluble in water. When rain and snow fall on the synthetic fields, these materials can leach from the surface and contaminate groundwater and soil. Teens and young adults are vulnerable to the impacts of the toxic chemicals when they play on synthetic turf. They're exposed to these through breathing, skin contact, and even ingestion. And some of these effects don't show up for years, but it's in their bodies and they will have a problem later on. A number of towns in Massachusetts and across the country have already been switching to natural turf. Even some universities have switched, including the University of Colorado. By the way, 93% of all NFL players do not like artificial turf because it causes more accidents and more damage. I would like to make a comment and an amendment, if you want to change it or not. I would like to suggest that there is a controversy, and I understand how DPW has to do a lot of work, and the Recreation Department wants to do this. I'd like to suggest that the Conservation Commission representatives of that, the Board of Health, our own town DBW jointly and thoroughly research the synthetic turf and alternate natural turf before the spring town meeting next year. Then they'll come up with a comprehensive and definitive recommendation based on the research for the type of turf to be used. Thank you.
Okay, as an amendment, that's going to be beyond the scope. If you want to vote no on this and bring an article to the next town meeting to appoint a committee, we can do that, but it's appropriations line item, so appropriate action would be vote no on this and then try to get a study done at some point in the future. This list is getting really long, so next I have Ms. Welsh.
Hi, Kelly Welsh. I'm speaking only as a member of Precinct 2, not as a member of the school committee. My comment is short. We decided this, we debated it as a body two years ago, and I would just challenge you to trust your previous selves when we voted for it in the first place and allocate the additional money. Vote the amendment down, please.
Okay, Mr. Johnson's up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I speak with great respect for the comments that have been made about the environmental concerns, and I do not in any way mean to de-emphasize them. I did want to actually, and I'm not going to address them further, other than to say that they will be evaluated and there will be a thoughtful presentation on the environmental issues and the specific design choices that can be made to mitigate them as best as possible, and then this body would ultimately decide whether to proceed with construction. In terms of the reason to go forward, as Ms. Cuny noted, this is not about saving money. We don't believe that there, we have not done a full lifecycle cost-benefit analysis, to be honest with you. The reason to move forward with this is about availability of fields and condition of fields. The GALE study that was done, it was a master plan of all of the athletic fields, said that we needed nine new natural grass fields because they get too much use and the condition deteriorates, and there's no amount of mowing and fertilizing that is going to keep them in good condition unless we reduce the use that they get. So the great advantage that synthetic fields have is that you can use them for many, many hours a day, and with appropriate maintenance, the condition does not deteriorate. So it's about providing quality fields for a longer season and for a longer day.
Mr. Callahan?
Thanks. Jim Callahan, Precinct 5. I'm no specialist in this, but I think we should leave the money in there. People spend a lot of time working on this. There've been people working on this issue for many, many years. I know for a fact, like at St. Sebastian's, they put their turf field in there, and they have not had a problem. And they had a huge group of people that worked on it for a year to literally check to see things go. And I know my school, I went to college in Worcester, it has a field like that, Boston College has a field like that, most of the big schools in the Southeast Conference, for example, they all have these turfs. So let's leave it alone, let's see what goes on next. And let's not sort of literally figure out, we're not experts in this, let's see what goes on. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Keefe?
Hi, Melissa Keefe, Precinct 4. I am speaking as a parent of an athlete, not of a school committee member. One of the first comments that my student athlete made after playing on grass versus turf was, "Mama, thank goodness we're on the turf because we're not restricted by the weather, we're not held up on holding the field for, resting the field for playing time, and the athletes played better on the turf." Respectfully, through the moderator, Ms. Whitehead, and anyone else, I happen to bring my folder from all the work that the previous school committee had done on the multipurpose turf at the high school. I'm happy to share that information with you. In that information is something that Ms. Cuny had brought up, was that the study that was done was that we, Falmouth needed nine fields, and they recommended three turf. So I hope that the body votes this respectfully amendment down, and we can then allow our athletes to play. Thank you.
Okay, move back here. Yep, Mr. Parker.
Bob Baker, Precinct 4. My first thought is that, I'm a yard nut, and I know what it takes to have a lawn, and that's without having kids running all over it. It's not mowing it once a week. It's mowing it, it's watering it, it's fertilizing it, it goes on and on and on. And I remember from the study a few years ago, we had a couple of fields that were literally underwater. And that's one of the, the study said that we needed, you know, nine new fields so we could rest some. Secondly, I do go to a few college games, and my alma mater, which one of the speakers, previous speakers is very familiar with, a fine Division III school, switched their football field three years ago from grass, which was mud by the end of the season, and they only played five home games. They switched that to turf. This Saturday, I went to an NCAA Division III field hockey game. I've never seen a game like this in my life because it was on turf. It was a totally different game. Kids had a great time. Next to the turf field was a turf soccer lacrosse field. Next to that was a turf baseball field. Virtually every college in the country, this is what they do. And most of the high schools, if they can afford it, have gone in this route. Even the town where I moved from 18 years ago, when I came here, they've converted their high school football field to turf. And they were supposed to get 10 years out of it, and the last time I checked, it was close to 15 years, and it was still going fine. So I understand there are some issues and some studies. I also recognize you can get a study on anything and everything. And I know we shouldn't have COVID shots, and we shouldn't have measles shots, and there's a whole bunch of stuff we shouldn't have because there's a study somewhere that somebody said we shouldn't do this. So I think this makes sense for the, you know, for the Recreation Commission, for the kids who play. I don't think they should be playing in fields underwater, and I don't think we can, I'm not sure we can afford to have nine grass fields. So I support the article, not the amendment.
Okay, Ms. Fenwick? Ms. Fenwick?
I think I'm trying to understand the math. So you either get three turf fields or you get nine grass fields. Is that correct?
That's what the report says, yeah. Keep up with the demand.
And so that's so that you can have fields that are resting, right? As opposed to, okay. So, then I don't understand at all why we need turf, artificial turf fields. If you've got enough fields that can rest, I want you to also think about the carbon footprint that everybody's been talking about. That grass is going to grow if it's resting, or it's going to be used. Anyway, I just don't get the reason for rushing to have something that you can have for 15 years when you can have a grass field for 100 or more.
Okay. The question's going to come on the amendment to strike the line item. All those in favor of striking the line item for $100,000 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Let's cue a slide. We're going to take a clicker vote on this one? Doesn't matter, I'm done. We're taking a vote. You've got all the issues there, you're either for it or against it, and you're going to express that in the way you vote. So we're going to cue up a slide. This is the amendment. A yes vote removes the line item of $100,000, and a no vote leaves the money in. So if you want to remove the line item, you vote yes. If you want to leave the money in, you vote no. So, are we? Yeah, is it on yet? Okay, yes. So not, I don't see the slide, the chart. Usually the chart pops up. Yep. As soon as they turn the machine on. So you press 1A if you want to take the money out of the budget, and you press 2B if you want to leave the money in. So press 1A to remove the money, and 2B to leave the money in. By a counted vote of 91 in favor and 120 opposed, the amendment does not pass. Someone had a question? Can we, can we tell if his, Mr. Donald's clicker worked? Are you able to see that down there? Someone from IT gave me a hand cue. Are we able to do that from here, or what do we need to do? Could someone from IT just give me a little hand signal? Are you able to test that there or not? Okay. Does he need to bring the clicker down to you?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Donald, would you please bring the clicker down? Okay, either way, it's one vote and it was 29. So, any further discussion on beach? The question will come on the main motion as recommended with the changes presented by the Finance Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it by the majority. Article 7. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 7 as recommended.
As recommended, this is the non-capital projects for the total sum of $1,778,900. Go through this by sections, Town Manager? Town Clerk? Back left? Leslie? Leslie Lichtenstein? Yep.
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct 8. This is money well spent by our town clerk and his very efficient staff for mail-in ballots that he had to send out, and then he had to get back, and he had to count. I think we all owe him a great big thank you. Plus, he got all this- Plus, he got all this tabulated and up on the town website early in the evening, for those of us who go to bed with the chickens, way before any other town on the Cape had it posted on their website. So I'd like to have town meeting thank our town clerk.
Thank you very much for that. I, obviously don't do this alone. Our office staff, our, our election workers stepped up, and anytime I asked them to do anything, they were available and they did it. And I'd like to give them a round of applause because they were fantastic.
Okay. Town manager. Select Board, town meeting. Human Resources.
Do we provide the town manager?
Tom Crane, Precinct One. Am I reading the explanation correctly that the town is actually contributing no money of its own to affordable housing, but this is all, um, the $950,000 is all from the excise tax and community impact fee?
So the room's excise tax is a local receipt that goes into the general fund and we are contributing $950,000 from the general fund for affordable housing. So I, I guess it depends on how you define town funds. They're not tax dollars, but they are general funds that are discretionary spending for the town.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Evidently you can't see back there. I had my hand up earlier. But on this, uh, first one, the town manager, uh, with the OPEB, uh, contribution of 500,000, I was just wondering, uh, do we have a figure on what the actual shortfall is that in that presently?
Do we have the OPEB numbers?
So right now, there's about, um, a little less than $5 million or around $5 million in assets that have been invested in the OPEB trust. I don't know the exact figure of the liability, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 130 million.
If I could just comment on that.
Yeah.
You know, we're not really required to pay that and most towns don't. And we proactively started funding that several years ago and we've increased it as we've gone along. So, you know, it's a voluntary contribution, but we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Information Technology. Zoning Board of Appeals. DBW Admin and Engineering. Disabilities Commission. And Recreation. All those in favor of the main motion as recommended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. Article nine. Article nine, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article nine as printed.
As printed. This is to change the name and purpose of the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to a Combined Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund. Ms. Freitag, I think you held this?
I thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Freitag, Precinct Six. I had a question at, um, our precinct meeting about this and there was no answer to it yet, so I'm gonna ask again. Perhaps our town manager or assistant town manager knows the answer now. My question is, does anyone else do this? I mean, this is some, it seems to be something cutting edge that we're trying to do here, but does anyone else in the state do this?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Johnson, sir.
So, Ms. Freitag, I'm afraid I don't have a different answer for you today. There are, um, many stabilization funds that communities have and don't have. Most communities probably don't have a debt stabilization fund. Most communities probably don't have a capital stabilization fund. Most communities probably don't have a combined capital and debt stabilization fund. Falmouth is a relatively large town with a relatively large capital improvement plan, as was referenced earlier. We're over $700 million on our ten-year capital improvement plan. The purpose of combining these two capital stabilization funds is simply to provide a mechanism whereby we can set aside surplus funds and reduce the tax impact of future large capital projects. So it's, it's good financial planning, it's good financial discipline. The town has been really fortunate to be able to set money aside so that we can carry out more capital projects with less of a tax burden. This isn't some, you know, terribly innovative, uh, you know, strange concept to put money aside for future capital improvements. And I would just remind the body that this puts money in a fund which will stay there and not get spent until we come back to this body for a two-thirds vote to spend it.
And as an aside, I have seen this in other communities and the Commonwealth is looking at it as a debt management strategy for the Commonwealth as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So if other communities are doing it, then I'm.
But it's not, it's not prevalent, I will say that. It's, uh, it's cutting edge, I guess.
And if the AG and Beacon Hill don't like this, then they'll just say no and we'll go back to the status quo. Correct?
Yeah. There's no, there's no review on that. It's not a general bylaw, so it doesn't go to the DLS. The DLS would, would do a review, not the Attorney General's Office. So it has to fall under the debt statutes, make sure there's no violation there, which there isn't. But the general, what you're mentioning is bylaws go to the Attorney General's Office for review.
Okay. So if, if there's something unusual about it that strikes a red flag somewhere up in Boston, it would be X-nade.
Yeah. The Division of Local Services and the Department of Revenue would, would grab it. Anybody know why we had the first stabilization fund? Remember back when Peter Boyer was our town manager? What was that?
Windows of Opportunity.
Well, the Windows of Opportunity came along after that. It, it was because the Commonwealth's required us to shut down our landfills, cap our landfills. And so we created the stabilization fund to be able to get some money in there because we knew that was gonna be a very expensive project going forward and we weren't sure whether or not the Commonwealth was gonna contribute. And we accrued that money and then we had some zero interest options and some funding from the state, and we didn't need to use the money. And so then the stabilization fund became something that town meeting would appropriate for other purposes until it was almost zero because we didn't use it for the landfill.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And then I noticed that you had held Articles 10 and 11.
Yeah, just procedurally.
So if you wanna release the hold, so I'm fine with that too.
Sounds good. So, uh, as printed is, uh, number nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 10 as recommended.
Okay. And Article 10, again, we held that just because of the language. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. Article 11, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 11 as recommended.
Okay. As recommended. Again, we held it because of the language. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 12, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 12 as recommended.
Okay. Article 12 is to appropriate $370,917 from the fire stabilization fund account to supplement the 2025 Fire Department budget. Who held this one?
Bob Donahue, Precinct Three. I'm coming up at this part, part of the article to ask, and I don't know, but through you, can we add funds from a separate source for this article?
Tell me what you're trying to do.
Well, what I'm trying to do is, is we obviously have a problem at the Hatchfield Fire Station with the doors. The town manager is going to do his very best to get that resolved so the town will not have a financial, uh, problem with it. But in the event that he can't or in the event that the thing.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be beyond the scope. So that's, that's another issue. What this is doing is taking money out of that stabilization fund that we created to use it when we needed it for the, for the wage issues. Because we couldn't hire the firefighters until we were all ready to go and all that.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Okay. The question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 15. Article 15 is a zoning article. Planning Board for the main motion.
Charlotte Harris, Precinct Five and Chair of the Planning Board. Mr. Chair, I move Article 15 as recommended.
Okay. As recommended. So you'll notice the recommendation, um, is a little different than the, uh, than the actual printed article, so I wanna make sure that as we go through this, everyone's focusing on what says as recommended. Couple of pages in from the, the article itself.
May I make an explanation about that?
Yep.
Um, you may think back a couple of years when we started our recertification project. It was approved, um, here and we sent it to the Attorney General. The Attorney General found that we had not explained it thoroughly enough to you and the potentially people had voted on things they didn't really understand. So we had to come back to you to get another vote on that. We are now falling all over ourselves to explain things really thoroughly to you. So that has resulted in you're seeing a couple of different versions that you can walk through, and I'd like to give you the pages on that. Pages 11 to 16, this was a version that we brought to a public hearing because we were thinking about changing it. We needed, we had run into some problems. We wanted to get a hearing on it. We got information, we made some changes. Okay? Then, beginning on page 16 and going to 22, this then became our recommendation. It's hard, so the, the one coming before you is the one on page 16 to 22. It's very hard to compare the old to the new when you have to flip pages. So we have provided for you, on page 149, I believe, a red line version that is supposed to be easy to understand. That was the intention, just trying to be helpful. And the things that are lined out clearly aren't there anymore. They were in a recommendation, but they aren't there. The things that are red that have not been lined out, that's the new part, and the black is the old part that's remaining. So that's just so that you would be able to follow it. However, it wasn't as easy to follow, we learned in the precinct meetings. So the Planning Department has prepared for you a slide presentation that I think it would be better for you to pay attention to. But overall, I would like also, on behalf of the Planning Board, to explain what it is we're trying to accomplish with this. For many years, the town had needed a multifamily zoning bylaw so that we could build multifamily housing. We knew we needed it, we didn't get to it, we finally got to it, and it turned out to be this so-called Mr. Cod, mixed residential and commercial overlay district. And it's complicated to follow. The most important thing to realize about it is it does provide for multifamily housing. It does provide for multifamily housing to be combined with small amounts of commercial things so it's easy for people to live there and you could have a more walkable community. That's supposed to be, you know, today's way of really zoning carefully to make livable, walkable communities. So that's what's in front of you, that's what continues to be in front of you. Okay. Jed Cornoch is going to walk you through the recommendation that is actually in front of you.
Actually, we have a present, a video presentation for that. The Planning Board is seeking to amend the mixed residential and commercial. The Planning Board is seeking to amend the mixed residential and commercial overlay district bylaw by making a number of changes aimed at improving clarity for applicants and practitioners while adding flexibility in an effort to create more housing and mixed use in the downtown area. Like any bylaw, the original passed in 2021, provided an excellent foundation to build upon, and this amendment seeks to do just that by, one, consolidating the Purpose Section; two, refining the definitions; three, clarifying how an applicant can proceed when their property is split zoned; four, creating clarity and structure for what's allowed and what's not allowed; five, specifying the allowed residential and non-residential densities; six, including flexibility for dimensional and parking compliance; seven, prohibiting age restrictions and short-term rentals; and eight, creating rules related to conflicts and separability. Although the Board felt the proposed amendment in the, well, conceived, during the public hearing, it became evident that some items were either missing or could be improved. After several meetings discussing the merits of these public comments, the Board ultimately decided to make some adjustments to the original article, therefore necessitating the new version found in the recommendation. Those changes include adding language to help with the split zone lot situation, changing the application section to be more flexible and to include some underlying special permit uses, clarifying the allowed density for the non-residential component in a mixed-use development, reducing the minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet, adding language to allow an applicant to exceed maximum lot coverages through a special permit, clarifying how side yard setbacks are handled, adding more parking language, and deleting the variance section. Please note, the bylaw red lines are found in the appendix of the warrant book and they show the proposed amendments as recommended. The next set of slides include a summary of the changes proposed within each section of the bylaw. In the Purpose Section, the Board consolidated the original seven statements into four new statements and made some minor changes to the text. Then, in the Establishment Delineation Section, the Board added language that clarified how an applicant could utilize their lot if it splits up. For example, the mixed residential and commercial overlay district only applies to certain locations within the Business One, Business Two, and Business Redevelopment districts. In some cases, a property may have Business Two zoning in the front of the lot with single residence C in the rear. With this new language, an applicant can not only use the entire lot to calculate the allowable density, but can now also use the entire lot when placing all of this allowed use. In the Definition Section, the Board modified the mixed-use development definition, added a clause that prohibits commercial accommodations as a non-residential use in a mixed-use development project. Additionally, the Board added a definition of multifamily development, the other use allowed in the Mr. Cod district, and deleted the three-quarter story definition. In the Application Section, the Board made it clear that the mixed-use developments and multifamily developments are allowed by right and can only be used in the Mr. Cod district. The Board also included a use table for those uses allowed by special permit in the underlying districts, again, B1, B2, and BR, to indicate that those uses are allowed by special permit by the Planning Board instead of the Zoning Board of Appeals if chosen by an applicant in a Mr. Cod application. In the Development Intensity Section, the Board added a language to make it clear that mixed-use developments will have a residential cap of 20 units per 40,000 square feet, but no cap on the amount of non-residential space. Meanwhile, in a multifamily development, the residential cap remains at 20 units per 40,000 square feet. In the Dimensional Regulations, the Board reduced the minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet to increase the number of eligible lots, created two categories for maximum lot coverage based on lot size. So now for lots under 20,000 square feet, the maximum lot coverage will. So now for lots under twenty thousand square feet, the maximum lot coverage will be ninety percent, while lots over twenty thousand square feet, the maximum lot coverage will be seventy percent. Then, they created three categories for maximum building height. Thirty-five feet for all properties under two acres, forty feet for properties over two acres but less than five acres, and fifty feet for properties over five acres. Then they adjusted the front yard setback to be a maximum of twenty-five feet while the rear inside yard setbacks remained at ten feet. Then they added language to allow non-conforming structures and lots to apply to waive the dimensional regulations through a special permit with the planning board. And lastly, in the parking section, the board added existing language from the parking bylaw related to location of required parking and allowing parking in the front yard or within five feet of a property line through a planning board special permit. In reducing the minimum lot size to six thousand square feet, it now allows for eighty-six percent of the properties to be eligible. The previous minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet only allowed seventy-two percent of the properties to be eligible. Meanwhile, creating two lot coverage categories will make it easier for the smaller lots in the district to comply with the requirements. As you can see, the majority of the lots in the Mr. Cod district are under twenty thousand square feet. Lastly, creating three categories for the maximum building height will create more housing potential on the larger lots in the district. That said, there are only twenty-eight properties that would be allowed to exceed the thirty-five foot building height threshold. The largest properties in the districts, those over five acres, include sites such as the Falmouth Plaza, Stop &amp; Shop, the Falmouth Mall, the Housing Authority. Meanwhile, examples of properties between two and five acres include, but are not limited to, the Windfall Market, the GJ Wings Plaza, TD Bank, Walgreens, Falmouth Inn, the Admiralty Apartments, and the Admiralty Inn. In the affordability requirement section, the board updated the state agency name from the Department of Housing and Community Development to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. In the entirely new additional housing provision section, the board added two items. First, that no age restrictions of any kind be placed on the future housing units in either a mixed-use development or a multifamily development. Second, that all rental units, both affordable and market rate, be rented for periods no shorter than twelve months. And in the procedure section, the board added language to provide more detail regarding the public notice requirements. And lastly, in the decisions section, the board added multifamily development as a use that the planning board could approve in the district. And lastly, the board added these two new sections to the bylaw. The first, making it clear that the requirements of the Mr. Cod district shall govern if and when a conflict arises with another section of the zoning bylaw, and the other, making it clear that the provisions of the bylaw are severable.
Are there questions? I hope it's clear.
Thank you, town meeting. I believe this article, the original article, is very, is, is a wonderful article because it provides affordable housing in this town. The revisions do need a little bit of work, and I'd like to suggest an amendment, if I may. I think you have the amendment written, queued up.
The clerk has it, and did we, we've got it for a slide? Mr. Galasso, was that sent to town hall today?
IT, if you could put the slide up, there isn't a presenter here to run the slide presentation. It's just one slide, I believe.
Would you just like me to read it in, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, why don't you read it, while we try to find out what happened to this slide.
This revision to the Mr. Cod bylaw shall not apply to any Mr. Cod mixed-use development or multifamily development approved by the planning board under site plan review or the special permits issued by the zoning board of appeals prior to the effective date of this section, 240-7.5, and Section 240-7.5(c), definitions under mixed-use development that the sentence "commercial accommodations" shall not be eligible for non-residential use for the inclusion in the mixed-use development. We ask that be stricken. And if I may, I would like to ask that Mr. Galasso take the presentation on my behalf. He is not a town meeting member, but he is actually a citizen of the town of Hill. Good evening. Michael Galasso, Precinct Two. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to this article this evening. I think the last time I appeared here in front of town meeting, I was the chairman of the Falmouth EDIC, and you so graciously approved us to build a solar field on the landfill which produces about $750,000 savings to the town every year. And then after that, you so graciously awarded us some money to build an affordable housing project in North Falmouth-Come-Gansett Crossing, which today is home to nine single moms and twenty-two of their children. So I want to thank you for those two awards for us. As you may know, I spent the last three years working on a project in the Mr. Cod zone called the 545 Main Street. It's the conversion of the Royal, the vacant Royal McGansett Nursing Home into sixty-seven units of affordable housing. It took us two years in processing that project, and we finally got approval in this last June. The amendments that are being proposed here would allow us not to have to go back to the planning department, the planning board, for another new approval. This amendment would exempt projects that have already gotten approval under the Mr. Cod bylaw and would not require us to go back for any revisions. We collectively, meaning my staff, the, the town, the town staff, the board of, of the planning board, the ZBA, the Historic Commission, the Affordable Housing Committee, the CPC, have all worked very diligently on this project over the last three years. And I hope that you would approve these, these two amendments, especially the first one, so we wouldn't have to return back to the planning board and probably delay this project for another six months or longer. Although town staff believes that we do not need the proposed amendment, we feel it's needed to assure us that we can continue moving the project forward and not have to take a step backwards. That's one of the two amendments that we're proposing. State law under Chapter 40A requires that any special permit which we have from the ZBA shall conform to any subsequent amendment to an ordinance, that's what we're doing here this evening, we're amending an existing ordinance or bylaw unless construction has started within one year of when that special permit was issued. So what that Chapter 40A says is that if we don't start construction within one year of when we were granted our approval from the ZBA, which was June 20th, 2024, means that we would have to start construction by June 20th, 2025. Otherwise, our special permit would be invalid, we'd have to go back to the, to the planning board and the ZBA. So you can see that would be a major setback for this particular project, and we're not the only project that has a permit under Mr. Cod. So hopefully, if you pass the amendment that we're proposing, it would exempt us and other Mr. Cod projects already with permit from the new provisions of this Article fifteen. So that's one of the amendments that we're proposing. The other is amendment number two, and I don't know if it's, it's a little bit lower down on the screen.
So we had, we had both amendments placed as one motion, so this will be one amendment.
Okay. So the other part of the amendment is that, right now, under Mr. Cod, if you own a hotel or motel on Main Street, it's commercial accommodation, and if you wanted to add residential units to that parcel, maybe you want to build it for your staff, you know, of the motel, or the hotel that you may have, or you wanted to house your staff, that will now not be permitted under the proposed change. So that to write, that was given to those property owners, that they will no longer have, and also will reduce the number of affordable units that we could build in the Mr. Cod district. You know, I appreciate many of the amendments, I'm sorry, any, many of the changes that are being proposed by the planning, planning board and planning staff. Those are many technical changes, but, you know, there hasn't been enough public input to these changes from the property owners along the Mr. Cod district. I mean, this is our main street. If you look at where this district is, it's our main street. I think that we also ought to be looking at design guidelines so we make sure that we get the best-looking projects that we can have in our town. We not, we haven't included any design guidelines. Zoning doesn't have a design guideline. It says, you know, how big your building can be, how tall it can be, how far it has to be set back, doesn't guarantee that we're going to get good-looking buildings. And I think we need to protect our main street. It's one of the main assets that we have in our town. You know, the historic district goes down Main Street right now to Shore Street. So this district goes from the Village Green to Tea Ticket to Sandwich Road. And I think that's a very important avenue that we have in our town. I think that it would be best if we maybe, now, I want you to approve the amendments, obviously, because if you do approve the article, we need the amendments. But I think you really need to take a good, close look, make sure that we're getting what we need out of this article, that we're going to get good-quality development, good-quality affordable housing. You know, we recently saw one on Main Street open up that was done by Linda Clark. It's a great-looking building. It's really going to serve our senior citizens in town. We need more development like that, well-quality, well-designed, and we're not going to get that unless we have something more than just the zoning ordinance. You know, there's nothing in the, in the, in this article that talks about having energy efficiency in our new buildings that we're going to have. Now, I think there are many historic properties along the eastern part of Main Street. We ought to be looking at extending our-
Hold, one second. What?
Well, we're basically beyond the scope of this. Harry, what you're saying is-
Beyond the scope, yeah, I'm just, he's got another thirty seconds, so we're going to let him-
Okay, Ricky Lowell, Precinct One. I just thought we were getting, it's, it's interesting commentary, but it's not really apropos of the amendments. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Galasso?
Yes. So let me finish up. As I was saying, I think that we need to protect our historic buildings that are on our eastern part of Main Street, and I think that we should look at maybe taking a step back and coming back here in a year or so with some more modifications to the Mr. Cod ordinance that include, that includes comments from the property owners, the Village Association, Historic Commission, and other people who are interested in preserving the character of our main street. So thank you. I hope you vote our amendments and that you reconsider what we should be doing with the main article. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on the amendments as presented in the overhead. Mr. Hargreaves? Mr. Latimer, you want to talk about the amendment as well? Okay. I'll put you on that list.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like an opportunity to-
Sure. Why don't you go first, and then we'll... Richard, I'll put you on the list. We're going to have the, the chair respond and-
I'd like to respond very quickly to what Mr. Galasso has said. The planning board is very sympathetic to his project. It's a great project. We hope that it goes ahead, very much so. I'd like to respond to his comment about the need for design guidelines. Falmouth, the planning board ascribes to the guidelines that have been provided for us by the Cape Cod Commission for commercial buildings. They're on their website if you want to look at them. They're very, very sensitive to a Cape Cod character and look and scale, and we think that they're very good guidelines for commercial buildings. We have developed our own for buildings that may be somewhere in between, commercial and residential, so that we would have those also. So there are guidelines, and we've discussed this before. Of course, we need guidelines. On the motion that he's made, we'll see how you decide, but before you make up your mind, I'd like you to listen carefully to the town planner and perhaps the town council, because we've gone back and forth on this. We don't want to lose this project. So how can we keep it and not have designed a zoning bylaw that creates an exception for a developer? That's such bad practice. So could we manage to keep it as it is and be sure that he's going to be able to go ahead? So I'd like you to listen to the town planner and perhaps the town council on this issue. We believe that he's covered, he's safe, under the current bylaws.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And as an introduction, Jed Kornok, town planner. Although Mr. Galasso's suggested amendments are understandable to the body, the first, I'll just speak to, our interpretation is that that language is not necessary. That project received a special permit from the zoning board of appeals and site plan review approval. Both carry with it a three-year time limit for the applicant to begin construction or use of the property. The section of master general law that was cited earlier was 48, Section Six. In this case, he would be protected, or that project would be protected under master general law 48, Section Nine, again, which allows for the three-year time limit on that special permit. As to the second part of the amendment, it is our, the planning staff and the planning board's understanding and interpretation of the zoning bylaw that commercial accommodations currently have a restriction on the number of units that a property owner can apply for based on the lot size of the property. And quite simply, without getting too technical here, if a property owner were to have maxed out, if you will, the allowable number of units using the property's square footage, they would then come back as a Mr. Cod project and look to essentially double-dip, allowing more density on the lot than was originally contemplated. So I would also speak not in favor of amendment, or the second part of the amendment as proposed.
Did you follow that? Okay, are there any questions? Is there anyone who would like to speak on it?
Do we, do we want the council to?
Mara, do you want to say? I would. Mara O'Keefe, Town Council. I also have some concerns about this amendment. In the first place, special permits that have already been issued under the current bylaw have inherent protected status once the bylaw is amended. Any, any special permit or site plan review that's been conducted already under the current amendment will not be impacted by the amendment. It does enjoy that protected status and is interpreted under the current bylaw and not the amended bylaw. And under, under the Falmouth zoning code, the special permit that we're talking about in the site plan review, those are, they don't lapse for three years, not the one year that was mentioned by Mr. Galasso. They are in effect for three years- They are in effect for three years until, the only thing that would cause it to lapse is if construction has not begun or if substantial use of the property has also not commenced. So this, what I'm talking about here with this protected status, it already exists. So I do have a concern from a legal perspective that what this amendment is doing is it's a redundancy in the law, and where you have redundancy, there's also a conflict. This, there's already safety with respect to the existence and continuance of the special permit and site plan review, as the town planner said, under Section 9 of Chapter 40A. I, my concern is not just the redundancy, but that the AG's office would consider this to be a conflict with Section 9 and would disapprove of the amendment. So those are the concerns that I have. I defer to the town planner as to the second part, but I do not think that Section 1 passes muster.
Okay. Mr. Hargraves? On the amendment.
Thank you. Some of this discussion is really helpful. Peter Hargraves, Precinct 9. Jed, thanks for your comments and all the information you sent out, and I did plow through it all, and that's the basis for my understanding this well enough to ask a question. And before you clarify this, my concern was for exactly what's disclosed in those two amendments. When I read the new Mr. Cod, I asked at our precinct meeting if Mr. Glaso was to approach the Planning Board with this plan today and have it reviewed under this new law. It read to me like it wouldn't pass muster. But I understand its protective status based on the fact that, you know, a special permit has been issued. But what about future projects that would add needed housing? It sounds like they, unless we pass the Second Amendment, it sounds like they would be disallowed by the Mr. Cod as it's proposed here for the revision. I guess I kind of feel snookered in the sense that I asked if Mr. Glaso's project were freshly reviewed under the proposed new bylaw, would it be approved? And the answer I got was, well, maybe, or yes, or something like that. So, so that I don't walk away with a concern about the transparency that I never had before in all of these presentations that are made about bylaws. Could you please explain my confusion?
I'll do my best. The simple answer to your question related to if the current 545 Main Street, or I should say, the 545 Main Street project that was approved by the Planning Board and by the Zoning Board of Appeals, as approved, would it still be allowable in this bylaw amendment? The answer is yes. And the reason I said it's a little complicated was because, and not to get into, into the weeds here, the 545 Main Street project utilized a section within our zoning bylaw, 240, Section 5.1D, I believe, which allows an applicant to apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit to allow a use that is not currently listed in the use tables, but is similar to, or similar in nature to, a use that is currently allowed. That allowed seasonal workforce housing, not commercial accommodations, as a special permit with the Zoning Board of Appeals. That same process, if the applicant were to come back and do it the same way again, would need to be followed in that same fashion. I hope that cleared up the confusion.
Then just one follow-on. Because we haven't dealt with this one, but in a non-conforming section, then, would this be a non-conforming use and then make it even more complicated in the future to get something like 545 Main Street approved?
No, it would not. So the non-conforming allowances in the amended bylaw as recommended deal with non-conforming structures and lots. So a applicant can apply for waivers through a special permit process to allow for dimensional leniency, if you will.
Mr. Latimer? Mr. Latimer, on the amendment note, you're all set. Okay. Mr. Netto?
Point, point of information, Mr. Moderator. You've just made a decision that this only counts as one amendment to the article, is accurate?
Yeah, he put it on as one motion.
Oh, thank you. I would like to serve notice that I would like to reserve the second, I have a second amendment to this article, if you would, please, and when we finish with this, I'll-
You'll have to be quick when we get this one voted on, but-
Okay, just one-
Jump up and, no.
Again, Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. Could you tell me, how many projects are there in this, that might be in this gray zone? Are we, are we potentially hurting anyone by approving this, this change?
There, to my knowledge, there is just one other project that was applied, that was approved under Mr. Cod, and that project is currently under construction.
Currently under construction, so it wouldn't be affected, then?
That's correct.
So I move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. I can't do that after you speak, however, you were the last one on the list for the amendment. So the amendment question will come. All those in favor of adopting the language on the screen signify-
Can I, through motions, divide the question?
Yes, you can. So we have a procedural motion to divide the question. This means we would take a yes or no vote on the first, number one, and a yes or no vote on number two. So the question first will come on, shall we divide the question into two votes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's been the chair's that the noes have it, and the question is not divided. The question will come on the main amendment as presented on the overhead slide. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's been the chair's that the noes have it by a majority.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer the second amendment to this article, and it has to do with the height restrictions that town meeting members you find on page 19 of your warrant book, please.
Okay, I don't have those pages. Can you just tell me what section it is?
It's, okay, it's section, how I see it's three, building height, on page 19 of the warrant book.
Okay, it's Section 240-7.5F, number three, building height. Okay. 240-7.5F, dimensional regulation.
Mr. Moderator, could I have the town planner put up the slide of the number of homes that were affected by the height change, please?
Joe, we're having trouble reading your writing here. What, what are you, what are you doing?
All right, fellow town meeting members, I'm, myself and my neighbors on Alma Road in the height section, which is currently next, the road next to Staples, where Paul Peters Insurance, Rogers and Gray now, across from Bank of America, that's the road we're talking about. If you look at the town planner's figures, he's saying that any building over 50 feet only affects five properties. Well, I don't know how they come up with five properties, because just on Alma Road alone, there's 20 houses. Now, I'm assuming that this height restriction of greater than five acres is basically the Kimco project, which is being designed for the Falmouth Plaza. And when I attended, and my neighbors attended, the first meeting of the selectmen over a year and a half ago, it, this apartment building that would be built there would back up to those people who live on Alma Road on the north side of the street. My house is on the south side of the street. My amendment, I'm sorry, you don't have the amendment, they, my amendment is to increase the setback of any building higher than 40 feet to a minimum of 75 feet setback if it's in a residential area.
So Joe, is that the front yard setback? Because we can't read your handwriting, and I can't, we can't find this in the actual printed warrant.
Here's the problem, when you say-
The problem is, I can't read this, so I'm asking you a question specifically. Is it the front yard setback that you want to go from 25 to 75?
Well, the answer-
Or is it the side and backyard setback?
Well, that's the, that's the, that's the crux of the problem, because depending-
No, no, no. What is your amendment? I just want to know what you want to change.
75-foot setback, would it, 75, whether it be front, side, or back?
So you want to change A and B of subsection four to 75? So the front and the side and back?
Yeah, because-
Okay. Because we can't interpret this. I have no idea what you're trying to do. If I don't know it, I'm pretty sure they have no idea, because there's nothing up here on the slide.
All right.
And the clerk doesn't know what it is, either.
The problem with this somewhat was Mr. Glaso's amendment was supposed to have been true, so we knew we couldn't make an amendment. I was just going to speak to this. So when it got reduced, his amendment, two-part amendment got reduced to one, I'm appealing to you. The reason why I'm, the confusion of front, side, and whatever it is, depending on how the developer put the building. So if we set a backside setback and he turns the building around, so stop and think about it, you have, my neighbors are going to be, we're going to be stuck with the building because the plaza is more than five acres. Well, 50 feet is higher than the top of that ceiling right there. Should have asked Mr. to bring a tape measure with us so we could measure this. How would you like to sit in your backyard and have people looking out their window at you and the activities? So the setback, front, side, or back, of any, any building higher than 40, so that takes 40 and 50, it encompasses the two acres of the five acres, have a setback of a minimum of at least 75 feet. That's what my, there's 22 of us that live on Alma Road, and the town planner's telling us that there's only five properties. Now, that's both sides of Alma Road. I don't know where he got the five properties from. And that's not counting the people on Russell Road that are the next road over, that are going to look at this building. I think it's reasonable. It doesn't stop the development, because you have to have at least two acres to have 40 feet, and you need five acres to have 50 feet. I would appreciate, and my neighbors would appreciate, so that we have some sense of a neighborhood left, instead of looking at a 50-foot building with a setback of, I think, of only 35 feet. That's all I ask. Is the amendment clear, Mr. Moderator?
No, we have lawyers talking to planners and clerks and-
I don't want to make this too confusing, because it's very simple. Put yourself in my position.
What's very simple, Mr. Netto, is you just take what's written here, and you tell us what numbers we're changing and what lines. That's what makes it simple.
Mr. Chair, could we clarify something? 50 feet equals five properties. See that line? That there are five properties big enough to have that height. It's the five properties, so that the, yes. It's not five houses, five properties.
Oh, I see what you're saying. There's only, whoa. My neighborhood is one of those five properties. Yes, it is.
And when, and when, if ever, Kimco comes forward, there will be public hearings about their site plan, and people are welcome to come to it.
We see, Alma Road is one of the five properties. Yes, it is. We're right next to the plaza. Okay.
So, Mr. Netto?
Yeah.
We're, Mr. Netto?
I hear you.
We, we're thinking, you're looking to add another section and not to amend section, subsection three and four, but to add one?
It would amend B of three, because they're talking about two acres. You could go to 40 feet, that's fine, but it talks about the setback. If you read down, and provided that for every foot increase, the height above 35 feet, all minimum setbacks as provided under Section 240, 7.54 are increased by two feet, except we're rebutting a non-residential use.
Mr. Netto?
So it's, you know, this Cape-
Mr. Netto? Can I ask you if maybe what you're trying to accomplish couldn't be done by adding a subsection C under three building height that says something along the lines of, for buildings higher than 40 feet, the setback shall be 75 feet?
I thoroughly agree with you wholeheartedly. You cleared it right up, ma'am. You have my complete endorsement on that.
Okay, so the amendment is to add a section C?
Yeah.
That says for buildings greater than 40, setback 75?
Yes. I'm sorry for the confusion. I'm not, this was-
All right. There's no such thing as a point of clarification. If you want to speak, put your hand up. The chair will get the floor next, and I'll add you to the list. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm still not sure you're clear about the five properties. One of those five properties is all of Falmouth Plaza. So it's the plaza that's being referred to. You're next to it. The setback you're concerned about is on the side, not the front. I imagine you're concerned about the side setback.
Well, it depends on how the building is situated on the five acres of the plaza. Are you going to face the rear of the building, the side of the building, or the front of the building?
The front setback would be, would be oriented toward the street that goes by it, not toward Alma Road.
So you're saying that-
Okay, all right, we're done. Ms. Freitag? We're going to take a vote on this real quick. Let's go.
So, Melissa Freitag, Precinct 6. I understand what Mr. Netto is asking for and what town council is saying, but I think we want to have that extra C line to be on the next page under Section 4, which is setbacks, and put it setback C, and let's say anything over 40 feet or 50 feet or whatever it was should be 75 feet, and not under the section that says building heights.
They've got setback requirements in subsection B of heights as well, so to me, it's messy the way they wrote it, anyway. Who do we have over here? Yeah? Yeah, right there with the hat, with the microphone. Microphone over here, please, on the left. Stand up so she knows who to give the mic to. Let's go, let's move this thing along.
Thank you. Max Johns, Precinct 3. This is a question for town council. How, if we add a section that puts a general setback in, doesn't that conflict with 4A that says no, no more than 25 feet? Because if you're saying that all setbacks have to be at least 75 feet, how do you square that with Section 8 that says- that with section A that says front yard setbacks shall be no more than 25 feet?
I believe your question is for Mr. Neto.
(laughing) Sorry.
And the answer is that's why we don't do this on the floor of town meeting. The question will come on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Kind of the chairs, that the noes have it by a majority and we're back to the main motion as recommended. Any discussion on the main motion as recommended?
Mr. Moderator, may I ask you a question?
Wendy Vogel-
Yeah, I'll put you on the list, yeah.
Precinct four. My question is more from a top-down view. This looks like this change in zoning will add hundreds of residential units to a fairly concentrated part of town. And I want to know what if any planning has been done to coordinate with water, sewer, other services that these properties will be using? Has that been addressed in the planning?
Do you want to address that?
Excellent question. Two parts. One, the planning department regularly consults with other departments in a monthly land use group meeting where we talk about all sorts of impacts related to zoning changes, but also development projects within the town. So we're constantly in communication with one another. And in addition to that, the planning department, myself included, have been working closely with the Department of Public Works to make sure that traffic improvements also come along with those types of potential housing units.
Okay, up in the balcony? In the balcony, yeah?
Yeah, one, one quick question, just reverting to Mr. Neto's question about the setbacks. Having seen what happened with the 40B on Alma Road and, and the new Kendall Lane and the minimum backyard setbacks there that are right against the Alma residents' backyard, I, I know what Mr. Neto is talking about and concerned about on the other side of Alma, but the point four setbacks, front yard setbacks shall be no more than 25 feet? Or no, not less than 25 feet? No more than 25 feet could be five feet?
That's, that's correct. It's no more than 25. The original planning board article back in 2021, the idea was to allow buildings to be set closer to the street to create more of a village-type environment, but this amendment seeks to allow for some more flexibility. If property owners want to go back to 25, they can choose to do that as well.
So, so they can go back to five?
They could go anywhere between zero and 25.
That's not very appealing to residents.
That's what dense development is. Go ahead. Yeah.
Gina Torrielli, precinct two. I think maybe I can help with what we're talking about in Alma Road, which is the setback there would be a side or backyard setback to the project because Klibko would be facing Davis Straits. And I think section 4B allows for an additional, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jed, where you are next to a residential neighborhood, which is what Alma Road is, and it allows for a 20-foot setback. And if the project is bigger than 35 feet, every two feet, every foot that it is bigger than 35 feet, there's an additional two-foot setback. So as I look at it, you've got a 50-foot setback if you put a 50-foot project. Is, am I correct in my math?
Yes, you are, and you're hired for the planning department whenever you-
Thank you. I've been trying to get recognized for 10 minutes so to straighten Mr. Neto down.
Yeah, right there in the, in the aisle. Yeah.
Amy Leonardi, precinct eight. I just have a little bit of a concern because the 50-foot building, the five properties in particular, this seems to benefit, and I just want it on the record, one developer in Falmouth Plaza. And it seems it has the appearance that this is being changed to benefit that developer. And, and that's where personally my concern is.
If it is not meant to benefit one developer, it's meant to address the ongoing housing crisis and make maximum use of the larger properties in town.
Ms. Goldstone.
Jed Goldstone, precinct two. I just want actually some clarification from Mara. I believe that there's perhaps a couple of words missing from 4B setbacks. It says side yards and backyard setbacks shall be no less than 10 feet. And then goes on to say that setbacks which are but the residential use shall be 20 feet, which then seems to conflict with 3B, the addition of two feet of setbacks for every foot of additional height. So it should probably read no less than 20 feet. Is that correct?
Um, I am going to defer to the town planner on that.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Well, it clearly says shall be. Is that the intention, shall be 20 or?
That is the intention, shall be 20.
That's it? Shall be 20? No, 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 no. Get the microphone.
So, so that conflicts with 3B? So there, so there is an internal conflict with the setbacks?
No, it's in addition to it. So if a property owner decides to go above the 35 feet, that additional setback requirement based on the amount of height over 35 would be added to that 20?
No, no, I understand the intention, but the problem is as written, it's not that. It says shall be. Not, shall be no less than, but it says shall be. And, and while I agree that the intention is to add two foot of setback for every foot of additional height to give the 50 feet, if you're talking about a 50, 50-foot, 50-foot tall building, it's not how it's written. And that's why I asked the attorney of Keith as to whether or not that was internally consistent, but she deferred to you, so.
Respectfully from one Jed to another, I just disagree.
Okay.
And I, I agree with the town planner's assessment. I don't see that there's an inherent conflict there. I think they, they can coexist.
Okay, we're ready for Mr. Latimer? Stand up so she can get the mic. Mr. Latimer?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I'm not a land use lawyer. I don't pretend to be. I am a tort lawyer and I hadn't thought about this issue at all until Joe Neto spoke about it. There is a point at which an oversized building on a lot right next to a small, much smaller building becomes a nuisance, interferes with light and air, and devalues that property, the smaller property. So I don't have any way of suggesting that any one-size-fits-all can fix that. What I would want to see is that the planning board in the, on site plan review for any of these projects shall take that issue into consideration and listen to the neighbors and, you know, determine setbacks according to that. I, I can't make an amendment now. I haven't come prepared to make an amendment. But this is a very real concern for me because, you know, I do practice tort law and I do know that, you know, at some point it becomes a nuisance and if it's, it devalues the property significantly, that's a taking. So that's just my opinion, but I think that's something the planning board should be, have to consider when they do site plan review. Thank you.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor of article 15 as recommended signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's been the chairs, that the ayes have it by a majority. Article 16, this is another planning article.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval as recommended.
Article 16 as recommended? Yeah. Mic, microphone, please.
Mr. Moderator, I question whether the ayes had it and I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Are there seven people that joined with him and wanting to do another count? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, let's get a slide for the previous article. This is a simple majority vote under the Housing Choices Act. All those in favor of article 15, the main motion, it says amendment, but this is the main motion. All those in favor, press 1A. It's easier to see it, yeah. It, it lets you know where you're at. By a counted vote of 151 in favor and 51 opposed, the decision of the chair stands. Article 16, the main motion as recommended by the planning board. Discussion on article 16. Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 18. Article 18, select board.
That the town vote article 18 as printed.
As printed, this is to authorize the select board to dispose of or otherwise convey all or a portion of two parcels located at Locust Field Road. Who held this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Freitag, precinct six. I had a question at precinct meeting and they didn't have an answer, so I'm going to ask the same question. And that was this, this relatively large forested parcel in Locust Field for, or how was it originally acquired? Was it purchased for a specific person, purpose, or was it tax-taking or what was it origi, why didn't we have it? How do we have it?
Mr. Moderator? It was taken for tax title purposes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on article 18 as printed? Yeah, Ms. Vogel?
So it seems like this, there's several articles in a row that all talk about town property being disposed of or otherwise conveyed. I just want to clarify, so this means that these won't be properties that the town will continue to own? Someone else will be building the affordable housing, not the town? Is that correct?
So the discussion to this point has been that the property would be sold. We certainly would, we're certainly not contemplating the town being a landlord. There's been no discussion or any support of that. There, there could potentially be a 99-year lease sort of arrangement, but that has not been decided to this point.
Further discussion on article 18. Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Actually, I need a two-thirds, so I'm going to declare on the voice a two-thirds. Anybody challenge that? Okay, article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I recommend that the town vote article 19 as printed.
Article 19 as printed, this is disposing of land on West Falmouth Highway. Discussion on this one? Yeah, Ms. Lowell?
Vicki Lowell, precinct one. That land is right at the sipwist exit off of the double-barreled highway. And I'm just worried that if the town doesn't have very good control over the development, that it would be too near the, that, that, it's, it's an unconventional access and exit there. And on most exits, you have a way to slow down and, and it's usually wooded and not developed until you get to the major road. And this way, you're sort of right on the major road. So if that does become a for, you know, a project, I would hope that there'd be very strong oversight to make sure the access, any access to that property would be as far from the, where you actually hit 28 as possible. And so, so I just wanted to get that on the record. Also, I do think it's too bad to not sort of have an area where you slow down and see woods when you're exiting a high-speed roadway and that would change. Thank you.
Okay.
Leslie Lichtenstein, precinct eight. I guess I have a question of the difference between article 19 and article 20.
Yeah, article 20 is indefinite postponement.
Right. But if you take a look at those two parcels, it is the same main parcel. The only difference is that article 20 has removed the small triangle at the actual corner where the road, where the off-ramp comes down from 28. I am not a town planner, but I would think it would actually be better for the town to maintain control over that little bit. I would much rather see 20 than 19. I mean, if, if the town gives up that entire triangle, the town has absolutely no control over what goes on in that little tip there. You can plant anything you want. You plant a tree, you won't be able to see anything. That worries me. I don't know how many people have gone by that corner, but it's not a great corner. And why exactly did the town feel that they didn't want to control that small triangle there? I'd like an explanation on that. Thank you.
Johnson's up?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the reason that we wanted to include both parcels is to have an opportunity for that land to be used for things like septic and setback as to control. The town will maintain control first. The town will be able to select among the proposals that are submitted in response to an RFP, but also through the permitting process because in all likelihood, this will not be by right housing. It will require a comprehensive permit. And as the town has now reached its, well, the town is now in a safe haven because we've met our two-year goal for subsidized housing inventory. And if things continue to go the way they're going, we will be in our 10%. We will have achieved the 10% goal, which means that the zoning board of appeals has much greater authority to shape the project. So we do feel like we have controls in place so that that tip of that intersection would not be developed, you know, right up to the corner with housing.
Okay, the question will come on article 19 as recommend, as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by the two-thirds majority and I so declare. Article 21, select board for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move article 21 as recommended.
Okay, as recommended, this is to issue a request for proposals or otherwise convey a parcel at 21 Pheasant Lane. Discussion on article 21.
Barbara Schneider, precinct four, which is where Pheasant Lane resides. I have been in consultation with all the people that live on Pheasant Lane over the last four days. last four days. I have researched the history of this parcel, and I come to you with heavy heart trying to not go ahead with an affordable housing lot, but I feel that this is a mistake. And the reason I'll tell you that is that historically, the person who lives at 27 in the house next to this lot bought his property 20 years ago, and when he did, he was informed that both parcels on either side of him were open space, that they could— not open space, they could never be built on for two reasons. One was because of the checkerboarding in the way it was designed, and the other was because of the excessive nitrogen loading that was going on at that level into Green Pond. And if any of you have any way that you ever go up Green Pond to that area, it is murky at the best. When this man, some years ago, you'll all remember, we had quite a to-do on Pheasant Lane, and that was because a house started to be built on one of those two lots next to him that wasn't supposed to be a buildable lot. And in a compromised situation, the town agreed that that house, instead of being torn down, should become an affordable house. And that is what it is. Now, this man, who thought he had open area on both sides of him, is faced with yet another lot on the other side of him becoming built on when he had no idea that this could happen. The people on the street had no idea this could happen. They were never—the man who walked away from the property had been told numerous times by the building commissioner that it was not buildable. He gave up paying the taxes on it when that happened. He never approached the people on the street to say, "Let's all buy this and keep it open space," because he didn't think they had any reason to. So I feel that this is not a place I would have chosen to go back to, to do this on the street that's already gone through one adjustment like this. And I would ask that we would all vote this down and let our town planner continue his search, which he hasn't done yet, on the parcels under 20,000 square feet, to identify other parcels that would be appropriate for affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on this one? I heard somebody say, "Mr. Moderator," but I don't—oh, in the aisle. Okay.
This is a petitioner's article, and we do have a slide presentation on it. So I'd like to go ahead with that, given Mrs. Schneider's comments, if I may.
Okay.
Couple minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I am Laura Moynihan. I'm the executive director and in-house counsel for the Falmouth Housing Trust. The petitioner on this article is Addie Droulette, who is our president, so I'll be speaking for her. This presentation was prepared with a number of slides addressing the three or four articles that were on the warrant. So we're now down to just one at Pheasant Lane. So I'm going to leaf through it. This is our housing production plan, and this is why we're here. Making town land available for affordable housing was recommended in 2018, as well as Mr. Johnson Staub talked about the subsidized housing inventory, but it's important to know and remember that not all of those units are actually deed-restricted, and that's because all rental units are included on the SHI. So the actual number is about 7% only. And we still have a significant shortage of affordable and attainable deed-restricted workforce housing. This is the data, and some of you may know this, but it is important, I think, to keep reminding us of our housing crisis. The average home cost is at $800,000, requires a household income of at least $200,000 to qualify for a mortgage. And if you look at the median income for the county, it's $122,700. So you can see that gap. This is our workforce that we're losing. It's projected about 800 families per year. We have a 35% decline in Falmouth Public Schools, and about 50% of Cape Cod workers live off Cape and commute. So the land disposition process, we've talked about it tonight, and this really applied to some of the other articles. We're asking you to support Article 22, I guess, is 21 Pheasant Lane. The land for affordable and attainable housing is limited. The Pheasant Lane property is one that has been identified as ideal for a home. I understand Mrs. Schneider's comments about the gentleman who was expecting certain things in his neighborhood, but—I'm just going to flip forward here. If you look at the neighborhood, this is Pheasant Lane, it's pretty much all developed. So while when people do buy their property, they have expectations about what may happen next door, you know, with respect, we are in a housing crisis. We have a lot of land that was acquired by the town in 2001 in a developed neighborhood. It's ideal for what we consider one single-family home would be appropriate there, perhaps with three bedrooms. It has all the electric and water available in the street. It has reasonable topography. And here you see the overhead of the other homes. And our vision would be one home for a buyer with income of up to 120% AMI. Now, it's important also, I think, to understand that the income limits for the county, if you're looking at a family of four, buying this home and living in this neighborhood, up to 120% of area median income, that family could make up to $150,000 per year. So this is workforce housing. The other home on Pheasant Lane, the Falmouth Housing Trust is proud to say that it was purchased by a working family, a gentleman who's a plumber in town, who has two children, three children, a lovely family. And they've been a great, I think, addition to the neighborhood, and especially people who need a plumber. Everybody wants a plumber in their neighborhood. So, you know, these lots are very scarce, and I certainly appreciate Mrs. Schneider's comments, but with respect, I don't think that's a reason why the town should not be disposing of underutilized land for very important affordable housing for our workforce. So with that, we'd ask you to please support Article 22. Thank you.
Any further discussion on 22? Oh, it's 21. Yeah, it's 21. Sorry. You said—yeah.
Hello. Peter Hargreaves, Precinct 9. I remember the other house at 23, or whatever the number was. And at the time, I think it was said the lot was not buildable in that it wasn't the right dimension for the residential zoning there. And I don't know if that's the case or not, or just hearsay, but is this lot qualifying to be built under the residential zoning that applies to that area?
Ms. Moynihan.
So under the FALMA zoning bylaw, this lot that's on the warrant, based on our research, is not buildable. But—so it would require a comprehensive permit from the zoning board of appeals, so whatever was built there would have to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. But interestingly enough, with the passage of the new Affordable Homes Act, there is now an exclusion to the former lot merger laws, so for starter home construction. So it is possible that under state law, a house of up to about 1,800 square feet with year-round occupancy could be built there by right.
Anything else on Article 21? Question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it by the two-thirds majority. Article 23. The recommendation from the finance committee was indefinite postponement. Mr. Patrick, you held this one?
Matt Patrick from Precinct 7. I have an amendment.
Can you put the amendment up on the screen? So this will be the main motion, since the recommendation is indefinite postponement. This will be the main motion that will be placed on the floor.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $106,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purpose of continuing the work of consultants to complete the research necessary to make the provisional pilot consistent with any recommendations from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Board of State Examiners of Plumbers and Gas Fitters to evaluate urine diversion as a method for effectively reducing the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus entering town waters in support of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan to be expended under the direction of the town manager or do or take any action on this matter.
So instead of the 1.9 million for the pilot project, it is the 106,000 for the feasibility study work?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So how is everybody tonight? Having a good time? I first want to start off by saying, when I spoke at Precinct 4 and 7, I told you that this was just a placeholder. Well, we got new information, and that's why we decided to amend this. Many of you were here when I proposed at the town meeting, "Take our streetlights by eminent domain," promising that we would save quite a bit of money. I likened it to the town owning one of those old telephones that you rented from the phone company for decades, which was enough to pay for the phone many times over. Well, it depends on how old you are, or whether or not you were a town meeting member at the time, which would have been about 1994. I was the new selectman, who was scorned as an arrogant washashore, know-it-all. People literally told me I was crazy. You old folks know who you are. So I won't name names. Our town moderator was probably in high school at the time. I'm not sure.
Freshman year at American University.
Anyway, thanks to our astute town manager at the time, Peter Boyer, you took my advice, and we bought the streetlights, and we have been enjoying, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars saved every year since—and many towns have followed our lead. I'm the same arrogant guy that brought up the UD toilets 15 years ago. It was a wild and crazy idea way back then, too, but now, when we are confronted with the degradation of our many freshwater ponds, as well as our saltwater bays and estuaries, along with the gigantic cost to clean them up, it's found believers, and I want to thank Earl and Hilda for keeping the spotlight on it. UD toilets should definitely be one of the tools we can use to resolve our water problems. Getting UD toilets approved in Massachusetts will also save us money. And we just saw in the previous article how important that is. I mean, if you want to have affordable housing, you got to have affordable wastewater as well. Every year lost means money will be spent on IA septic systems that will be very expensive and may not even get the job done. I want you to guess who—I'm going to read a paragraph. I want you to guess who made this statement. And it's—I'm going to quote. "Along with advanced septic systems, sewers, aquaculture, and permeable reactive barriers, urine diversion offers another possible tool for reduction of nutrient pollution. Given that urine contains most of the household's nutrient output, and that affluent from traditional septic systems is the primary contributor of those nutrients to our waters, diverting urine from these systems would significantly reduce the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus entering our waters. Moreover, UD has the potential to be a relatively low-cost, simple, and environmentally friendly method for managing human waste, protecting our waters, and recycling valuable nutrients for use as fertilizer. If used on a significant scale, UD could accelerate—could also accelerate our water protection efforts." Now, you should know who this is, if you're a good town meeting member, because you got—you got this in your email. Does it sound familiar? It should be, because it's a direct quote from our official town document written by Mr. Renshaw, our town manager. So it made me very happy when I—when I read this, Mr. Manager. And it's essentially what I told you 15 years ago. Okay? So the town has come a long way. We have a budget from MasTech for $106,000. It will enable them to continue what they're doing, all the items that you saw enumerated in the first warrant article before it was amended. That breaks down, you know, I can read that budget. I don't know if that's appropriate. It's a summary. Probably won't take that long, but—
People could ask the questions if they had it.
You trust me? Okay. That's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Okay. Discussion on the main motion as presented. Yep.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure that I'm here in support of the amendment, but I think I am. I want to ask, when you say "we," Mr. Patrick, I don't know if you mean the original group that's no longer part of the prime movers on this, or the working group that the town has been—has established and is working to pull the facts together and get together the information needed to do this pilot. But I got—I hope you all read this letter that Mr. Renshaw sent to all of us, and as usual, articulate, comprehensive, and understandable. Thank you, sir. But when I got to the last sentence, I was really concerned about where the working group was going with this. And it's a short sentence. "We're working to move this urine diversion pilot project forward with an investment of staff resources and municipal funds that's commensurate with its potential as one of several strategies to improve water quality." So if you read that in the absence of the entire contents of the letter, then I think it's just fine. But what I take away from the contents of the letter is, we're losing our prime contractor in January. There won't be—there are no more funds to continue the work, and basically, there are so many roadblocks that I don't know how you work around them or over them. So if the town is really conducting a good-faith effort to evaluate urine conversion, I think it's kind of imperative that we support, you know— you know, what's being requested here. And I hope that there is sufficient commensurate staff resources to continue the working group in the town as supervising this work and bringing to us a comprehensive understanding of all the puts and calls, because it seems very complicated, more than anyone anticipated. So I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Renshaw as a working group person on where the town is and how we would continue work in good faith if we didn't approve this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Hargraves. I want to defer the question. I formed the working group. Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson-Staub actually has been leading that effort from the staff perspective. He's one of the staff members that have been involved since June. So, Peter, if you don't mind answering that question, kind of where we're at and where you see the group going?
Sure. So the town meeting timelines, as we all know, are long. And this project is very complicated, so it creates a...created a difficult circumstance. And what I mean by that is we are still in the middle of an $80,000 feasibility study under a contract with the Massachusetts Septic System Test Center. And there are milestones laid out in that agreement that have not been completed yet. It seems that we likely...it may be difficult for the consultant to meet their commitment to complete all of those milestones with the $80,000 that has been allocated. But we are not far enough along to have determined how much additional resources the town might be willing to negotiate to pay, given the amount of work that has been done and the amount of work that needs to be done. So we have, you know...we've worked very hard on it. We've got a great working group with representation from the Water Quality Management Committee and the Fresh Pond Advisory Committee, working with the Massachusetts Septic System Test Center and its consultants. The explanation in the town meeting warrant book outlines some of the obstacles that have not been overcome. You know, one of them is that we do not yet have confirmation that it is illegal use of municipal funds to subsidize improvements on private property to install urine diversion toilets in private homes for this purpose. So, you know, the question comes, how much more money do we invest in and when? I personally would support a smaller dollar amount, more in the range of $30,000. But, you know, there is likely more funds that are going to be needed in order to move this forward. One of...that funding obstacle that I just referenced is not one that actually requires a lot of consulting dollars. That's something that staff can do and perhaps working with the town moderator as representative person in special legislation. That's a matter of more time being needed. So I don't know that we need $100,000 at this moment. Maybe $30,000 would prevent some delays. That's where I'm coming out on.
Okay, Mr. Clark? Ms. Fenwick, I'll add to the list.
Peter Clark, Precinct 1. I'm speaking in favor of this amendment for a number of reasons. First, it honors the work, the working group, the effort they already made, and it pledges money to support them and puts that money in the hands of the town manager. He can use $30,000 if that's what's needed. But having $106,000 means that there is money there that will not cause any delay if more money were needed. The most important thing, I think, is that it makes a statement from town meeting that we, as a town, are still very interested in this study and what it may produce. And I think that's a valuable statement to be made to the state, to be taken to the state. They've been slow in responding, and so I think it's helpful for us to have taken a positive action with some money attached. We don't have to be thinking that it's all going to be spent, because that's in the hands of the town manager and the working group. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Duffney?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Duffney, Precinct 6. If you don't mind, I'd be remiss if I didn't say how appreciative I am of our planning board for what they've done for us this evening to try to make the Affordable Homes Act a reality in Falmouth. We have taken the first step that others haven't with that under urine diversion, which is, again, another leadership role, I believe, the town of Falmouth is taking. And at the end of the day, and I respect the work that's being done by folks that are in the trenches, not myself. But I know that when the time comes, there are going to be questions that are going to be asked. They're going to...I've...my wife and I have signed up, if you will, to see if we even can do this. And so part of what's going to happen will be to understand, you know, some of the different complexities of this issue. I don't think that urine diversion is going anywhere but forward, and I think that we should embrace anything that we can to try to keep this going. And to other people's points this evening, I believe that that is a big thrust of this, to not put this on pause, okay? To continue this work that's going forward. It's in-the-trenches work, okay? It's not going to be the work that the $1.9 million was going to request. And so with that, I would urge you to please support this. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fenwick?
I'm remembering back to probably about six or seven years ago, a group of town meeting members put forward some ways to speed up the town meeting. And one of those things was, when an amendment was offered that was in effect a total reworking of what was being brought forward, that we should not pass this as an amendment, but ask the petitioners to come back at April town meeting with a new motion, because this is in effect is a new motion and using the amendment to run around that. I think we should vote indefinite postponement and bring back a motion that solves this issue.
So this is...just to be clear, this is the main motion within the scope of the posted article. It's not an amendment, okay? It is the main motion. Okay, Mr. Latimer? Someone in the back, okay? Yeah? Mr. Donald?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. I would like, Matt, to explain the economic benefits of urine diversion, including how the recycled urine is used, how that...
I think we've had those presentations. Do you want to pay for this study or not? This is the question before the group. Continue the study. Ms. Leshenstein? We're not going to redo the 20-minute presentation we've had in the past.
I don't think...
We'll re-mail it to you if you forgot.
Precinct 8. Last spring, town meeting was in support of studying urine diversion. We were told a study group would be formed. They would present something at fall town meeting for us to vote on. The committee did not. I know they have made good work towards this. I do applaud their efforts. I do question the committee's makeup. The two people who brought this to town meeting, Earl and Hildy, who had the most skin in the game and probably the most background in this particular topic, were not approved to be on this committee, because they were told they were biased. Now, I'm sorry, but if I have a heart problem and I go to the hospital, I want to see a cardiologist. I don't want to be told that he might be biased. You should see a podiatrist. It just bothers me that we give lip service to it, but we don't really do it. Now, if the money isn't needed, the town manager doesn't appropriate it. But we were told we'd have something to vote on this fall. We don't have something to vote on this fall, because the committee did not give us something to vote on this fall. So I ask you, please, support this. $106,000. It's really not that much when we're looking at potentially a billion dollars, folks, to sewer the town of Falmouth. Thank you.
Mr. Donald? Mr. Donald? He's behind you. Mr. Donald?
Yeah, Malcolm Donald, Precinct 6. I'd like to just reaffirm what was previously presented about the...this is...the money that we're looking at to spend on the sewer systems. This is...it's...this $106,000 is just pocket change. And the urine diversion offers a potential solution to our problem, 25% of the cost of sewers. So let's give the town manager the money, any money he needs, so they can get this urine diversion approved as a way of handling our waste. I vote...I recommend a vote to pass this amendment.
Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Moderator? Can I add something?
Yeah, right after, Mr. Donahue. Yeah.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. Our assistant town manager said 30 grand. It might be. There was also a mention about some contractor that's bailing out on the project. You know, I just feel like I don't have enough of information on what this committee is doing. They want us to do this, and it sounds great. But I'm not finding anything concrete to vote on, that we've got this done. This is a...this part of it is done. A, B, C is done. All we're waiting to do is D, E, and F. Until then, I say no. Don't...give them the...I'll grant, give them 30 grand and help them out. But I want to know what the whole story is before I vote 100 grand for a project that I don't know where the money's going, who's it going into, or what. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pedron?
I can...let me just read the tasks and the costs that they propose to do. Prepare for and facilitate UD planning group and other stakeholder meetings. $5,000. Develop and finalize participant agreements. Includes input from town council and other town committees and officials. $7,000. Work with the state plumbing board and toilet manufacturers to secure approval of fixtures for the UD study. That's $8,000. Work with MastEP to secure approval of UD project design, urine collection methodology, data collection protocols, credit towards TMDLs, et cetera. $15,000. Work with the state plumbing board and engineering firm to design and secure approval of UD plumbing and storage systems. That's $35,000. Conduct outreach to potential study participants. Identify 70 top prospects for the study and secure signed agreements. Includes conducting participant survey, reviewing results, and communicating with homeowners. That's $6,000. Develop and finalize urine management plan, i.e. collection and disposal, and secure MastEP approval for the plan. $20,000. Continue to seek alternate funding for UD study and homeowner subsidies. $10,000. And develop final reports summarizing all the work and proposing the UD study design, timeline, and budget. That's no cost.
Okay, right down there?
Kate Jewett, Precinct 5. It's my understanding, at least in past practice, that when people have to sign up for the sewer, that they have to sign up for the sewer if it's going through your neighborhood, unless you have some other situation coming, and that you have to pay for your hookup. And it's pretty darn expensive. And we've been talking an awful lot about having affordable housing. I don't know how these people that are barely making it, making their mortgage payments, are going to be able to pay for this as well. Now, we have an option here that would be a lot less expensive for the homeowners as well as for the town. And I think we ought to really put all of our efforts into figuring out how this is going to work. I say we vote for this. Thank you.
Okay. Right there in the aisle, again? New information?
Maggie McGough from Precinct 7. I'm also a board member of the Falmouth Pond Coalition. I participated in last year's sort of informal pilot run by the Green Center, and I've been following the work that the planning group has conducted over this year. I'm speaking on behalf of the Falmouth Pond Coalition in strong support of this, I guess, new proposal as a productive step toward the possible affordable nutrient remediation technology that UD can be for us. And as just stated, the alternatives are so much vastly more expensive than UD looks like it will be. And the timeline on this is very urgent. We've got to get this moving through the process with DEP in order to be able to include it in the watershed plans, to know that it works, so that it will become an option that the residents in Falmouth can choose. This working group has resolved a number of issues that were listed out in the April town meeting, but they have a number of other issues that need to be finalized over the following months. And so I think it's vitally important that we push this forward and approve this.
Okay, the question's going to come on the main motion, the $106,000 from Certified Free Cash to continue the planning work as listed on the overhead. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye? All those opposed, no? The chair that the IAs have it by a majority. Chair will now entertain a motion to proceed after 11:00. We have four articles. All those in favor of proceeding after 11:00 signify by saying aye? All those opposed, no? The chair has that the IAs have it by a majority, and we'll go on to Article 32. The recommendation is indefinite postponement on Article 32. Who held it? Okay, you're going to...are you going to place a positive motion?
Yes. Hi, my name is Miranda, Precinct 2. Is it possible to motion to postpone it to the April town meeting?
It is already...recommendation is indefinite postponement.
But specifically to the April town meeting?
You cannot bind one town meeting on a future town meeting. The Select Board has the sole legal authority to post the warrant.
Okay. I...okay. I just...I really like the bylaw as written, and I think that the only problem with it is the start date. I think that short-term rentals are an overall bad thing for this town. Having many short-term rentals is a bad thing for the residents who are trying to rent and live here, because they're getting outcompeted by people coming in for short term.
Okay, we can't discuss unless we have a motion. Are you going to put a motion on the floor?
Yes, I would put a motion to postpone it to January 1st, 2026.
So you cannot bind...
Oh, sorry, to amend the start date to January 1st, 2026.
Okay, so you're going to move Article 32 as printed?
As printed with a start date.
With a start date, okay.
January 2026.
Of January 2026, you said?
Yes.
Okay, so it's what's printed in the warrant booklet, but changing just the last word or number. 2026. Yep? Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Annie Hart Cool, Precinct 6. Thank you for letting me speak on this. I think it's great to postpone it or forward the date. The date was my biggest problem as well, because January is just around the corner, and there's a lot going on. and there's a lot going on here. But there's more than just the start date. So I think it's important that we all recognize in here that there's no one to enforce it at this time. So hopefully, by 2026, we'll know who's going to enforce it. The Board of Health has decided not to be involved, and they sent a letter on October 3rd, 2024, saying they would not be enforcing this bylaw. There's also some concern about parking for this. Right now, you can have one car or less. That... I don't know. It just seems like an interesting bylaw for that or term for that. So I just would like to do more than just the date and actually look at the body of the bylaw. I think the group has a great start here. This is a great start. We absolutely need a short-term bylaw, short-term rental bylaw, but it needs more than just a date change. How would I do that, Mr. Moderator?
You would vote no on it, and then they'll go fix it and come back, which is what they were recommending, that we indefinitely postpone it so the working group can continue its work.
So I want to support indefinitely postponing it.
So you want to vote no because we now have a positive motion on the floor?
Thank you. I encourage you all to support indefinite postponement so the bylaw can be written correctly for when it comes back to us. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Doug Brown, Select Board. I also worked on the working group, and I think we did a pretty good job with the bylaw, but we haven't had a chance to really discuss it at public forums. The planning board may want to consider taking a shot at it. Maybe they might want to offer a zoning aspect to it rather than just a general bylaw. But this is not something that we should be debating on town meeting floor. We tried to get it ready, so hopefully we would have a chance to vet it in public forums, but we didn't really get that opportunity because it was kind of a last minute. So it's just a precursor to the spring town meeting. Hopefully, we'll have some more public meetings, be able to do a little more outreach, and discuss it more thoroughly, and come back a little more prepared.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yeah. Ms. Harris.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Charlotte Harris, Precinct 5, and also on the planning board. Doug and I chaired the panel that held four public hearings about this. So there was an opportunity for a lot of input, and many people came and gave us ideas, but not as many as we had hoped. One problem was that although it was well advertised, we felt all of the meetings were held at 4:00 in the afternoon. Many people aren't available to go to meetings who are directly affected by the problems created by short-term rental housing. So we feel we didn't get enough input on it. I do think that it's a wonderful start, but it has several other problems. And I hope that indefinite postponement will lead to something in April. It may or may not. But there'll be an opportunity for input, wider input than we've had before. So I'd like to, even though I really like the bylaw, that we would go with the indefinite postponement.
Okay. The question will come on the main motion as printed with the date change. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Depending on the chairs, that the noes have it by a majority. Article 33.
That's a public comment for...
Article 33 recommendation was also indefinite postponement by the select board. Who held the Article 33? Same? Okay. Okay. Would the select board like to make an IP recommendation? I mean, a motion?
I move Article 33 as indefinite postponement.
You've all heard the main motion, indefinite postponement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 34. Okay. I had 34 circled on mine. I don't know. Okay. Yep.
Did you have... I have a procedural question on Article 32.
32.
Were we voting on the amendment?
Nope. She made a main motion as printed with the date change because the recommendation was indefinite postponement, and we can't discuss it unless I have a positive motion. She placed the article as printed, but made the effective date 2026 rather than 2025. All right. We'll just vote again if you didn't understand what we're doing. That's what we did. We had a main motion as printed with one change from what's as printed, and that was 2025. The last numerals at the end of the article was 2026. That was the main motion because there was an IP recommendation. And remember, yes means yes, no means no. That's my old thing. So we'll revote it just so that I don't have to waste time on that. Do you have a question about that?
Procedural question. It sounded like we had indeed rejected the article. So if we've rejected the article, that means that we cannot bring it up again in the next...
That is not accurate. That is for a petitioner's zoning article, which does not have the approbation of the planning board.
Thank you.
That's a statute. It's got nothing to do with that.
Thank you.
Okay. So are you requesting a revote? You think people didn't understand it?
If you vote yes, you are going to put it off.
Okay. By a call of the chair, I am going to reconsider the main motion on Article 32. Okay? Article 32. The main motion is as printed... This is the short-term rental bylaw proposal. As printed, just changing the effective date at the end of the article from 2025 to 2026. Okay? That is the main motion. So if you vote yes, you want to implement this bylaw now. If you vote no, you want them to come back and let the working group continue to work on it as part of the dialogue was. Okay? All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Depending on the chairs, that the noes still have it by a majority. Article 34. You're telling me that 34 wasn't held? I had it held. Okay. I had it circled. So Article 36, that's even better. Article 36. You got a main motion here? Yeah. It's buried way back here.
Mr. Chair? Did you find it?
Yep. Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah. I move the motion as recommended.
Okay. This is the planning board as recommended with the following substantive changes listed in the recommendation. That's printed in the warrant. Who held this one? Was there a particular question or something? Yep. Let's just see if it's a particular question that...
Yeah. A number of people have come to me and said this is really confusing, so I thought I'd ask some questions. First of all, just some clarifications. This... The red line... I'm looking at the red line on the back. Was... This is building permits that go from 18 months to 12 months, but is that 18 months in the original building permits? Or is that... Is this... Is 18 months what was in this? Is new to this non-conforming structures? Because there was a comment about three years before.
So, if I may, on page 178 in the red line version, I believe you're referring to the sentence that's being proposed to be stricken?
Something of that, yes.
Crossed out?
Yeah.
Right. So the amendment seeks to correct the language that was originally there. State statute only allows a 12-month period.
Okay. Thank you. And then there was... What fraction of Falmouth, more or less, is non-conforming? More or less?
More or less, vast majority.
Vast majority. So this applies... Basically, this applies to most of Falmouth, correct?
A great deal, yes.
Okay. And then this... Many of these comments are, "Does not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure." Is that new language to any of our... To any of this zoning?
It is not, no.
Okay. Then that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion or questions on Article 36? All right. Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this point, the chair would recognize the chair of the select board for notification of the next town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Next town meeting will be April 7th, 2025.
April 7th? Okay. And at this point, I'll recognize the finance committee for notification of how much we spent.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You have appropriated $22,922,564.59.
This time, the chair would entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. This meeting is dissolved. Don't forget to drop your clickers off on the way out. I can see the clerk looking for his button on the microphone. Don't forget to drop off your electronic voting devices, please, on the way out.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of town meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters. The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon, we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient Wood Soul Terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, (508) 548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
For more than 50 years, SEA has been a leader in ocean education, offering undergraduate, gap, and high school students the opportunity to gain hands-on experience in ocean sciences and blue humanities. To learn more about SEA's programs, please visit SEA.edu.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. (508) 548-0911.
The attorneys at Oppenheimer-Nicherson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration. (508) 548-8255.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
East Spence has been Falmouth Hardware Store since 1913. Enjoy our kitchen department with a wide selection of kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Find your home repair needs at our hardware store. Our friendly staff is available to assist with your hardware and kitchen needs. (508) 548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpeting and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, servicing Falmouth and other Cape communities for over 50 years.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, (508) 563-5070.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations:
John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, (508) 548-2287.
Ermine Level Real Estate, 550 West Falmouth Highway, (508) 548-0703.
Dogs &amp; Hogs, 781 Main Street, smoked turkey and Thanksgiving orders to go.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, (508) 539-38.